Today's meeting is presented in a hybrid format, in person at CBWD's Steve Robbins Administration Building and via Zoom. Members of the public may participate in person or via Zoom. Zoom details are listed on the meeting agenda, and the meeting is streamed live on the district's website and YouTube channel. Members of the public who wish to come on any item on the agenda or within the jurisdiction of the district will have three minutes. Public comment may be provided in person via Zoom or by emailing the clerk of the board. Such comments will become part of the board meeting record. We may have a board member attending remotely for a portion of the meeting, so in the event that we do, we'll make sure to call on them specifically as items come up, and during those times, we'll do a roll call vote. Otherwise, I don't think there's any need to.
Correct.
Yeah, so we'll just pay attention to whether or not we have a director attending remotely. Otherwise, we're all in person. And would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is the republic from which it stands, with which it stands under God, in the name of liberty and justice.
Yeah, I know, it's cool, huh? It's like old jellyfish and stuff. Roll call, please.
Good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada will be joining us in a few minutes, and we'll note that time for the record. Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson should be absent for the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, good. So we do have three presidents. That gives us a quorum. Do we have any additions, deletions, or adjustments to the agenda?
No, sir, not that we're aware of.
Not, neither do I. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment at this time? I believe we do, right? Are we gonna...
Let me check. We have a member of the public who has submitted a card, but it is specific to our hearing, so that...
Okay, so we'll do that at the hearing? All right, that's fine. Anybody, anybody else? No public comment at this time? No, nobody on the line?
And I don't see any on Zoom at this time.
All right, good. Well, then, 5A. Special recognitions. We have the retirement Michael Dietrich, Chief Inspector with 20 years, who's here. And...
Moved.
I have a little reading, and then we'll do a presentation up here in front. So Michael began his career at CBWD in October of 2002 as a carpenter. After one year, he was promoted to Construction Inspector 1. He worked through the inspection ranks and was promoted to Construction Inspector 2, to Construction Lead Inspector in 2014, and then in 2018 to Chief Inspector. As the Chief Inspector, Michael managed one lead inspector, one scheduler, six inspectors, and approximately three on-call inspectors. The Inspection Division works on approximately 60 projects ranging from capital improvement, encroachment permit, and land development projects. Michael was instrumental in transitioning from paper inspection to electronic inspection reports, and he has worked extensively to train, mentor, and manage his inspection team to provide the highest level of field verification and quality assurance of new facilities and assets. Michael was raised in Kailua Kona on the big island of Hawaii and makes an effort to visit his hometown once a year. Michael's Ohana consists of his wife Ruth, of 30 years, four adult children, and seven grandchildren. He enjoys scuba diving, snorkeling, and live musical performances. Apparently, no surfing, though. You could maybe take that up at some point. Michael's dedication, cheerful attitude, and desire for continuous improvement will be missed, so congratulations and come on up.
You got your speech with rise? Do you need some notes?
I just wanted to thank the district for giving me the opportunity to work here. I really enjoyed it since our first day. I've met a lot of great people here, a lot of great friendships. I, you know, worked here. I learned a lot here. I really appreciate everything the district has done, so. I've learned a lot here, and it's kind of a weird thing, retiring and not going to work. I'm so used to waking up and going to work, and now it's different, but I just wanted to say thank you to the district for...
You'll have a list of things.
Oh, yeah.
You're leaving a big hall. Thanks again.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. President, I would move approval.
Motion in a second. Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed 3-0. Nothing was polled. Okay, so this gets us into the action calendar. 8A. Who's presenting this?
I guess Sylvia and I can tag-team it, but we've had a request from one of the board members to allow for presentations by external parties, and when Sylvia and I looked at, you know, our past practice and what we had on policy, there was really nothing authorizing that. And so she worked with Jeff and also surveyed other agencies to see whether or not they had similar, I guess, policies or procedures. And it turns out that there aren't a lot of places that have formalized this, but she was able to cobble together a policy which we have offered for your approval, which basically allows for members or external parties, members of the public, to come speak up to 10 minutes on any particular item so long as there are submittals ahead of time.
Okay. I noticed in here also there's some language about board members being able to put items on the agenda. You know, it seemed to me...
Good morning.
It seemed to me like an awful lot of rules. I'm not aware. I mean, maybe I'm missing something, but it seems that we have the ability to do that now. Is there a need to have a codified...
Can I make a comment? And I'm sorry, I just showed up, but...
I'm just commenting on the board members who are putting something on the agenda, not the...
Sure, but I caught your comments, and I just want to say that I completely agree with you. I thought that this was a simple request, to ask for someone to come and present an item that I think has, could have an impact to our agency. It's somebody who's co-sponsoring the bill, has first knowledge of where the bill might be, the conversations that are being had in Sacramento, whether it's going to move, whether it has support, et cetera, et cetera. So I agree with you. To me, it seems like it's, you know, unnecessary rules or just, it just seems... I really didn't understand why we had to bring it here.
So if I may, Mr. President, in reference to the process for board members to make a submit, or excuse me, submit a request for future agenda items, is the process, this process that we put in place where the board president may request, or any member of the board may request an item with a second from a board member without, excuse me, without necessarily needing a vote, is a standard practice across multiple agencies. I surveyed all cities here in the Coachella Valley area, as well as I contacted special districts within Riverside, Orange County, San Bernardino County, and LA County to see if they had processes similar in place. And they all had a very similar request, other than exclusively for cities. It is either the mayor or the mayor pro tem that has exclusive authority to make requests. So we didn't feel that it was something that is outside of the norm in government agencies. It is a practice also that I have seen working in both county and city government prior to the district. So the request process is a standard process across multiple government agencies.
Okay, so for the external party, this policy would allow them to put items on the agenda even though they may not have support for that from board member or staff?
So a member of the public may come, may submit a written request. They would submit that to the clerk of the board's office. My office would then submit that to the general manager for his review and consideration to determine whether the request aligns with district business or is in, you know, the benefit of the district. If the district manager, the general manager, excuse me, has the ability to approve or deny the request, should the general manager deny that request, the external party does have the option to come before a board member or make his or her request before a board member. And the board member does have the option to direct staff to put that on.
Well, maybe we should put that in the policy then.
It is. So the staff report is a little brief, but if you look through the resolution, it does, let me pull that up. I don't remember.
All right, I'm only looking at the staff report.
Correct.
Or the board president.
Correct. So, for example, if you'd had an item, you would just say, "I'd like to have this," and Director Aguilar could second that or support that.
You know, if we had infighting and contentiousness and things like that, this policy probably makes a lot of sense. I just don't know that we do. I mean, do we have to follow the policy? I mean, you know, there has to be 10 days before, and, you know, you have to get the second and all these things. I mean...
Well, can I just say one thing? I think, I mean, the reality is, this came to us as a result of a specific request to a committee meeting, a board committee meeting. So I think Vice President Estrada and I were both of the mind that we would just go in. It seemed like a relatively innocent request. A party wanted to come and make a presentation. It was going to be 10 minutes, and it seemed something easily for us to do. And then we got into the logistics of it and realized that it was more complicated, then we decided perhaps it was best to move this way. But, I mean, for purposes of transparency and goodwill, I think that when organizations like this or any organization wants to come and educate us, whether it's five minutes or 15 minutes, I think we should be obligated to listen to it. So if this policy gets us there, you know, I'm good to go with it. If it gives the committees the discretion to allow those presentations without the policy, and that's your interpretation, then I'm good with that as well. So either way, I just want to make sure that we can accommodate.
President Powell, and, yeah, and it wasn't a request from, just to add some clarity, it wasn't a request from the party. It was actually my request that they come and give us a presentation because, you know, they were talking to me about this bill. They seem to have a lot of information. I thought that it was best for them to give us that information at the Legislative Committee so that the board members that participate in that committee and the rest of the staff could also hear the information that they wanted to share. So I requested that they come and give us a presentation. So that's really, that was the request, and then we kind of bumped into these logistics. So if this is what we need to do, I'm okay with it. I just don't want to create a bunch of red tape for something that I thought was so simple. So regarding the 10 days, or, you know, if this gets us to where it's just, okay, there's two board members, and we can put it on the agenda, and that's it, then I'm okay with that. But if it creates all these other hoops, and, you know, I don't need more red tape, you know, for something so small.
It just seems like more stuff to pay attention to.
So let me just provide a little bit of balance to the discussion. Any staff member who has the ability to brief the board and influence decisions must fill out a Form 700. They can't just come and talk to the board. Their conflicts have to be reviewed and approved. So when you open this up to any member of the public that wants to come influence the board, provide information, there's no such check. All staff is asking is that the board provide authorization for anyone that wants to come in and talk. It's not something staff wants to just go and say, "Oh, sure, you want to come talk? Come talk to the board." Because we have to go through a screening process before we're able to talk to the board.
Right, but for the three-minute comments, you don't have to go through any of those hoops.
Correct.
But so you were talking about a 10-minute presentation versus a three-minute comment period.
Correct.
Correct.
With materials, slide decks.
And then they provide it ahead of time.
And if I may add, the 10 days, the reason the 10 days, as the board is aware, we post our agendas about six to seven days out in advance. The 10-day deadline is the same deadline that is requested of staff and departments. So in order for me to compile the agenda and provide to you the materials that you need to review the items and make informed decisions, I need to have that information 10 days in advance just as well from external parties as I do from departments and staff.
Jim, I'm not, with respect to your comments, I'd not heard that before. I mean, my public agency experience, I've never heard a requirement for a staff person to have to fill out a form.
Yes, sir.
Frequently, when I was on council as mayor, we'd have, I think particularly labor organizations come and do presentations without limit on time. So I just think that this is a bit too intensive for us to be able to allow what we're trying to get to. But in the absence of anything else, if we have to do it, then I'm ready to.
And if I may add, the reason for the policy was, and it wasn't the request, is that in the past, or the practice of CBWD has been to not allow external parties. So rather than us, in a sense, pick and choose who gets to make presentations, and in order for transparency and consistency, we felt that a policy that clearly identified the guideline, the guidelines or the process would allow us to then address future requests or similar requests and follow those with consistency. And that was the reasoning behind that, is that in the past, we've received multiple requests, and we've denied those requests based on past practice and the board's preference at that time.
Can I get some clarification just to make sure that I'm understanding the policy correctly? It's, as long as you have two board members that make a request, whether it's for a board meeting, a special meeting, a committee meeting, as long as you have two board members that agree on putting something on the agenda for someone to be able to make a quick presentation, that's all you need.
Correct.
Okay.
But that's assuming the general manager says no to the request. So if a member, if an external group wants to make a presentation, and they meet the guidelines, and the general manager agrees, they're on the agenda.
But it doesn't need to go through the general manager first. It could just be a request of a board member?
Well, that's true. Yes.
Right? Is that, is that correct? Okay.
It goes directly through the board member, or to be more efficient, perhaps goes through the staff, and if the staff says no, which they may or may not do, then it comes to the board.
Okay.
We're just trying to...
I'm okay with it. I'm okay with it. I mean, if it's easy as, hey, look, there's two board members that say we want something on the agenda, okay, and that's it, and we have to meet the guidelines because of the agenda, you know, I need to have it, you know, by the deadline that you need to publish the agenda for the items to be on there. I'm fine with that. That makes sense.
So here's another question, on the opposite side. Let's say that somebody comes in and wants to give a presentation about, you know, giraffes, whatever. And, I mean, we have giraffes in the district, right? So they want to do a presentation about giraffes, and they do everything, and the general manager decides no, and then they appeal to the board, and we say, you know, "We don't really care about giraffes." No. Is that, we can legally prevent them from giving, but they could still make their three-minute...
Yes.
And they can submit written comments, and they can do all those things.
Correct. They just would not be given, in a sense, the ability to come up and make a full 10-minute, five, 10-minute presentation to the board. They would be able to say the same comments under the three minutes in public comment.
Okay. All right. Well, that's helpful. I didn't know where this was coming from, and I was like, why are we doing this? I think it makes...
I'd like to make things work.
Well, you know, and if we had, I mean, we're like solving a problem that may not even really exist right now, but I can see it maybe happening in the future. I mean, if the boards split and there was, you know, I mean, imagine some other boards that were aware of that don't get along so well. I mean, this, you're going to want a policy like this.
That's exactly, and I would agree with the board clerk. That's the whole reason for this, and it's not a matter of who comes forward to speak. It's just a matter of having a policy that...
Yeah, I get it.
...or be seen as picking and choosing.
Yeah, you're right. Okay. I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Good. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passed 4-0.
Thank you.
Yeah. Little surprises. Let's see now. We have 8B, which is the resolution for the elections. We don't have any humans in the San Diego portion of our district, do we?
I believe as of this time, we do not have anybody living in that area, but there is the potential that somebody may move to that area.
It dawned on me that I was aware there were no people living in that, you know, 10 years ago, but I hadn't really checked lately. It's possible, yeah, that could happen.
Possible, mm-hmm.
Huh, okay.
Yeah, they move, so.
Yeah, well, they can bring it in.
And this is a requirement of the county registrar, so...
Correct.
Yeah, no, it's required. I just, I just thought I would check to see if there's actually people out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so there's, it's, yeah, the land, we have land in the San Diego County, but not, it's not occupied by humans.
Correct.
Fair enough. All right, so do we need a presentation on that, or should we...
No, okay.
Is there a motion to approve 8B?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Got that passed 4-0. HC Engineering, Armando. We have, you guys, go ahead and do your presentation.
Good morning. Good morning, President Powell, members of board, audience, fellow staff. Just for the record, my name is Armando Rodriguez with the Engineering Department. I'm here. I'm here sooner than expected, quite excited and happy to be. I didn't expect to be seeking this request, but the request here is to seek authorization, to solicit bids for the construction of the Palm Desert Groundwater Replenishment Project, Phase 2. And with me, to support me on the environmental permitting questions is William Patterson, and glad to have his support on this project and have it here as quickly as we do. As you know, the project includes the construction of three groundwater replenishment ponds within the Whitewater Stormwater Channel between Cook Street and Freewaring, and the main goal and the main driver is really long-term sustainability, and that is to put 15,000 acre-feet a year within the Whitewater River Subbasin area of benefit. The project also includes the installation of concrete slope protection along the San boundary of Warp 10. And at this point, I would like just to pause to see if the board would like to have a further presentation, or are there any specific questions? I know we have talked about this project a couple times here.
Yeah, you know, I went through the letters that were sent in. I mean, it was back, it was years ago that this, there were, I think, five comment letters that were in the EIR. And one of them, and it just dawned on me that I hadn't even considered, they said they're worried about the pumps, you know. Well, it turns out the pumps are five miles away from here, and, you know, that's not obvious when you look at this or consider this project.
Now, this is premium benefit, because we have the pipeline here showing in yellow, and yes, the pumping, it is five miles away, and so it's really easy for us to just extend the Native Valley Pipeline, shown in red, and make this project happen. Where do we need it most?
You know, I'm concerned about this. I have been, and I am only concerned for one reason. I'm worried about us having the water available. I hate spending all this money. And, you know, this is approved project, correct? We have the permits in hand.
We are very close. We're around the corner of a permitting. I wish I had, here's the date I'm going to get permits. We just had a conversation as of yesterday with US Corps, and it was very promising. There was no issue that was unremediable, that we cannot address within a very short timeline, enough so that we feel confident if the board gives approval to, within mid-July, go out to bid, as we're finalizing the permit and getting that permit executed. I think we're right around the corner.
Is this the permit that had an increase?
This is the permit that had that million-dollar price tag.
Yeah.
And I got to say, I have to give it to William. So that was a 4.8 million permit over the past, last time I was here. Since the last time I was here, that permit fee has gone down to 3.8. So instead of having a $20 million price tag, we have an 18.8 million price tag, so we're gone down because William has done a great job of negotiating that. We're going to go back and sharpen that pencil. It might be a little more, but definitely there's a substantial decrease.
Let me answer your question. What would happen if we just put this on hold for a year, just to see where our Colorado River water and how things come out here in the next year? I mean, lots may happen in the next year.
Yeah, you know what? I thought about that a lot, but from my point of view, it's going to take us time to go out to bid, to construct.
Yeah, but once you go out to bid, you're telling everybody you want to do the project right now. So...
We do want to do the project right now.
This, if we decide that we're just going to wait, and we decide not to utilize our Colorado River water, and that's basically saying we're going to put that water on the table for everybody else to try to take. And I think it would be an extremely bad move going into these negotiations to just say, "Yeah, well, we have water, but we're not going to put it to use. We're going to, we'll leave it out on the table for somebody else." That, to me, that's, this is a project we've identified. There's, you know, if there's any part of the valley that's not benefiting as much as other parts from replenishments, it's this middle area that we've been looking at for 20 years, trying to figure out how to deal with it, and this project addresses it right on. And we have, and if you think about it, even if there's cuts on the Colorado River, I mean, there's the underrun, which is significant, which we, which we're addressing because of this project and the Oasis Project and some of the other golf course connections. But also, we're moving the approval agreement water, which is not subject to cuts by the Bureau of Reclamation. That's 20,000 acre-feet, and we're currently moving it. We're taking a haircut on it. We're moving 15,000. We're losing five up to Whitewater. Once this facility is built, and I know Robert's not here, but that contract with Matt is temporary, and moving that approval agreement only has a few more years on it. Once this is built, there won't be any reason to move it up to Whitewater. We'll put it here.
I get it. I get it. Okay.
Armando, can you review the funding and the schedule again?
Yes, absolutely. So like I said, this project is fully funded. We have 18.9 million dollar price tag, and this is a multi-year project. We anticipate to fund it within the West replenishment fund, and we have 16.8 million over the next two and a half years. And then we also have, there is the stormwater component, so we're going to do a bank along the south boundary of Warp 10, and so we have a stormwater fund of $2 million. To help shore this project and the cost, we have allocated supplemental water supply charge in the neighborhood of $13 million for this.
15.
Uh, schedule, sorry. Knock on wood. We're around the corner on permitting. Hope that we can bid and finalize permit at the same time. Go out to bid in mid-July. We anticipate this is a 15-month project. We'll have contractors on site in October this year, and then complete it in January 2024.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is, I mean, in my view, this is a really, this is a legacy project. It's one of those things that's going to transform the valley.
This is, for me, a generational project. This is the one I stand behind, and I'm very proud to be part of.
It's good stuff. Okay.
The supplemental water supply charge, is that what's, is that what's going to get phased out, and we're creating a separate fund, or is that the new fund that we've created?
I believe that's the fund that we're going to go with, the offset fee, now that we're going forward.
So is that the offset? So is that the offset fee fund, or is that the?
No, this is the supplemental water supply.
That's the old fund that's going to get dissolved?
Right.
Yeah.
Are we going to draw down the money from that fund, or are we going to, are we going to combine the funds after this transaction, or?
Well, we're, we're trying to.
Are we going to draw down to zero?
And then? We're trying to, to account for this fund, we do have $12 million allocated for the non-potable water project as well, and I believe, I haven't seen the mattress, but I believe there's a million dollars there in, in, that is left. We, we do anticipate that we live in, in a very inflationary market right now, and so there's a little cushion there if we need to add a little bit more money to make this project go, that we can tap into that supplemental water supply charge, and we did that on purpose, just, just to give us some breathing room.
Can you just very briefly, just for purposes of me understanding the nexus to this project and, and the supplemental water supply charge funds being applied to it? What's that connection there? Can you just very, you know, if you could, if you have like a short answer on?
Absolutely, so the supplemental water supply charge, the main purpose is to really help the aquifer, right, so we're looking at palm, direct and indirect, so non-potable water project, or a Ingu project, or a direct recharge like this project, that's, that was the purpose of the fund, and so this has the direct nexus for us to use that, that fund to be able to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Good, all right, thanks. Anything else before we consider approval of this item? Is there, is there a motion to approve eight? Thank you. A second, if there's a motion, a second. And vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
That's four, four yeses, okay, so that is approved four oh. Right, got that right, Cas.
Thank you.
Thanks, Armando.
Yes, okay. Thank you. All right, next, more engineering, this is the lift station upgrade project.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board, audience. This, where we're seeking here is the authorization for General Manager to execute a professional service agreement with the web associated with an amount of $584,034 for the design of the lift station 8003 upgrade, and authorize additional soft cost for, of $108,403 for total, total authorization of $692,437. Would you like a presentation, or you have a specific question associated with this design?
You know, I just, is there, I'm guessing it's a no, but is there any connection to this project and the one we just approved, because they're literally right next to each other? Is that just a coincidence?
It's just a coincidence, you know, that the nexus really is not necessarily with the Palm Desert Replenishment, but with the Warp Ten headworks that you recently approved.
Okay.
You know, these, uh, these, these are facilities that were built back in 1974, they date me, I'm practically as old as this lift station, and some of this facilities, some of the equipment is of original construction, and I gone to the hospital a couple of times, and this lift station hasn't, and so it's just about time we put some dollar figures into this and, and just rehab, rehabilitate it, it really needs it. If there is a lift station, second to headworks that keep me, keeps me up at night, is this lift station, just because the tributary area is huge, Indian Wells, Palm Desert, Rancho Mirage, Sumcat City, and that is right in the middle of a population center, and there's a lot of sensitivity here with environmental, if we ever get SSO, hate to have SSOs right in front of a high school, but then not have a SSO right in front of the Whitewater Storm Channel, and sanitary sewer full for the SSO.
Right, no, no, no.
It'd be very expensive.
I mean, so, yeah, and, and just kind of on that point, we're not allowed to put any wastewater into the stormwater channel?
Absolutely.
And, and that prior project, that was all Colorado River water that's going in to percolate into those ponds, because we can't even put our treated effluent in there.
Absolutely not.
So, so an SSO would be even worse.
Yeah, it would be very expensive.
Yeah, all right. So, just to, just to backtrack, do we do have a plan to keep people out of the, those ponds?
Yes, there, there is going to be.
As in, as in teenagers? That's a fair question.
A very fair question, and I'm sorry.
High school's right there.
I didn't address it, yeah, and thank you very much for the approval. The very first thing I'm going to do, top of my priority, is to walk over and run over to the Communications Department and start our public campaign in regards to, A, informing the public that we're coming, and then informing the public in regards to what's here, and then informing that we, we have to do some processes here that, to keep teenagers away, signage and patrols and, and some, some form of barrier, yes, absolutely.
I think you're going to have to look into some kind of fencing, that, that a public campaign for teenagers isn't going to work. Well, and working, working with the high school, obviously, is going to be.
There's going to be a lot of education that's going to happen to the community.
But yeah, they're always. I went to school there, so I know that, that's. Yeah, show up in board shorts and go for a swim in the channel, especially when it's warm. Looks inviting.
I found, I found some old pictures, I think I forwarded them to Jim and John of The Desert Sun, and must have been, I don't know, in the 60s or something then, and there was these Jeeps on the replenishment ponds out there at Whitewater, that, you know, folks would use them as recreational ponds.
For windsurfing, huh? There was a windsurfing club that had a lease from the Coachella Valley Water District, where they had facilities and competitions there on those ponds.
Wow.
Yeah.
It looked fun.
Because the wind there is really good. I, I believe, this is probably in this, might have been the 80s, I believe they set a, a windsurfing speed record on one of those ponds. I don't know who, who's the historian that would have that information?
Bob Kiran, but he's gone.
Yeah, yeah, you know, because it gets pretty windy up there. Anyways, all right, so you're covering the security on, I know we're, we're off track here, but as far as the lift station goes, I get it, I mean, 40, 48 years isn't that old, Armando, you're, you're doing fine?
This, this facility, 48 years, it's a miracle we lasted this long, and it's a testament to you, to our staff that does a great job maintaining them. They visit the site every week for three hours, but, but it's time.
So, so this is, this is an item for the design, do we know the, do we have an estimate on the project cost?
We anticipate there'd be 4.6 million, but because of the inflationary pressures that keep going, it could be a little.
Yeah, maybe higher.
A little bit more. We're definitely with no more, as once we complete the design and come back to you to seek bid authorization.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed four oh.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Armando, go, go talk to the P R people. Run! Yeah, thanks. A D, see Task Order Seven with PSA with Wender and Curran for the Coachella Valley Regional Water Management Group?
Hi, Zoe, good morning.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. Environmental Services has two items before you today, so beginning with number one, which, as you said, is to authorize Task Order Number Seven with Winder and Curran for $116,280, and that's for fiscal year 2023 program management for the Coachella Valley Regional Water Management Group, that is split between the six-member agencies, so C B W D's portion would be $19,380. The Coachella Valley Regional Water Management Group brings great value to the Coachella Valley, having garnered over $20 million in grant funding, as well as identifying other grant funding opportunities and fostering collaboration. Happy to answer any questions about that task order.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Yeah, thanks, that's an easy lift. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed four oh, and then Task Number Eight. So, Task Order Number Eight.
Yes, so Task Order Number Eight, for that action item, we're actually asking for two actions, number one, to authorize Task Order Number Eight to provide support with a Proposition One, Round Two Integrated Regional Water Management Planning Grant Application, and then to authorize staff to submit the application, C B W D would be submitting on behalf of the Coachella Valley Regional Water Management Group. Prop One Round Two makes $8.5 million available for the Colorado River funding area for implementation projects. We were able to negotiate 4.1 million of that for the Coachella Valley region, meaning that we don't have to compete, which leaves everything up to chance, and are actually having a higher proportion than we did competitively during Round One. And within the Coachella Valley, given the amount, we foresee that we would select four to six projects for some level of funding. Again, this is cost shared, but I don't have the exact cost share for you at this time, because we're in the process of project selection, the cost share will be proportional to the dollars that each agency gets. As I mentioned, the full amount, the full amount is $117,720, so our C B W D would pay proportional to whatever funding they're allocated based on that competitive process.
Right, okay. Is there a motion to approve the A D F?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any other, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed four oh.
Thank you.
Thanks, Zoe. On to Finance. I like this new organization. Right, makes sense. Eight G, this is the, no change, right, in the state water project levy of 11 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value? Carrie Swainy and Jeff, good morning.
Oops, sorry. Good morning, President Powell and members of the board. So this is the adoption, the annual adoption of the state water project levy, so there is no change from the existing rate right now at 11 cents per hundred dollars assessed value. I don't have an attached presentation, but the resolutions were, were included as part of the attachments, and so I will just be answering questions.
Thank you.
I would add, Mr. President, members of the board, that we did have a comment letter in reference to eight gene, so that is, that was distributed to the board and is available for any member of the public, should they ask, and will be added to the record.
Thank you. Right, so we're required by law, even though there's no change, to adopt this annually? Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve eight G?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed four oh. And then we have the, this one's coming back, a little rebound, Jeff, go ahead.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. This is per board direction, you're returning the Bank of the West line of credit renewal per board's instruction. We did work with Bank of the West to lower the size of the facility to 25 million. Bank of the West agreed to having all the other terms in place, which is good, so assuming the board is approving this item today, we're ready to start doing draws on the funds right away, and so the, based upon where the costs are today, with this, the sulfur rate being where it's at, would be borrowing just under a percent, which would cost $245,000 for a year. The non-drawn rate of 0.2, if we didn't draw anything, it would be about $50,000. I also like to mention Darren Hodge, our financial advisor, is in town doing some work with us, so he was ready, willing, and able to come join us to make sure that he could answer any questions of a technical nature from the board.
So with that reduction down to the 25 million for the non-drawn, is, or for the line, does, does anything, did anything change?
No, nothing changed.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I went through it, I'm looking for things that might have changed, I didn't see anything.
They, they were very gracious to hold to the terms.
Okay.
Jeff, thank you for doing this, I have a quick question, we discussed at the Finance Committee meeting briefly, the possibility that with lowering of this total amount of the, of the, of the line, that there's a possibility that we may have to cash in maturities before their expiration date?
Well, there is a possibility, I mean, if we needed funds above the 25 million, what, what I did was, in contingency for the board not approving this item today, I, I sought information from our investment advisors, if we were needing to do a, a selling off of securities in order to have 25 million in cash, the cash that we need, what would be the implications? So they gave me a list of seven securities they recommended to liquidate, and we would be foregoing the earnings on those of just under 2%. So when you consider that, a, a loss of revenue of 2% versus costiness just under a percent, it, it makes it a prudent decision to go ahead.
Okay, I just thought, thought we should be on the record with that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Okay, good. Yeah, I appreciate you bringing this back and going to bat for the, is there a motion to approve eight H?
We have approval.
Second. Yeah, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed four oh. Okay. H R. Thank you, guys. Used to seeing him on the screen.
I know, you look so much better.
Usually over there.
And you still didn't talk. Thank you. Blanca, good morning.
Okay, Blanca, good morning.
Members of the board, my name is Blanca Garcia, Senior Risk Management Specialist in the Human Resources Department, and the purpose of this board action item is to request authorization to purchase property and liability insurance for the upcoming fiscal year 2022, 2023, in the amount of $2,000, $2,521,813, which includes a 5% contingency. Additionally, we are requesting to select alternative carriers should any of the insurers listed either amend or withdraw their quotes prior to the July 1st renewal. We also wanted to note that for the owner's protective professional liability policy, we noted that it may exceed the estimated projections presenting it in 2019, and by about $13,096, but it's still well within the contingency requested at that time. Are there any questions?
I just had a couple on the staff report, and this may be your first time presenting, is that right?
That's correct.
So I'm going to be super nice.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
There's a table, I guess the first thing in the staff report that kind of recaps all the, the insurance types and, you know, totals to 2.5 million. I think on your cyber liability, isn't the new insurance company going to be Resilience, not Tokyo?
Yeah, the companies listed there are from last year, so Tokyo Marine was the one that's ending in 2030.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, so maybe none of the other ones changed, they're all the same, that's the only one that changed.
Yeah.
And then I would just point out, for, since we're self-insuring, the auto liability, it, it kind of skews the numbers, because it goes from 400,000 to zero, but I'm guessing that our, our cost isn't going to change that much, because you may have claims.
Correct.
Right, that equal 400, I mean, who knows what it'll be, right? It's unknown.
Correct.
But I, I would suggest taking that 400,000 out of the total for there, and so it ends up being 2 million versus two and a half, and the increase, if you, if you just get rid of that auto liability, the increase is 25 and a half percent.
Yeah, and again, because this is last year's number. Yeah, and again, because this is last year's numbers that we still wanted to represent, that's what we requested last year.
Right.
So next year it won't be there at all.
Yeah, I get it, but you know what I'm saying? Just for the, just because it's not really a four point six percent increase. It is for the request, I get that, but, but what, what the impact is gonna have is now that you're self-insured, we may have claims that we, um, that we don't pay premium for, but we still have to pay.
Correct.
Yeah. Anyways, I, I just subtracted that four hundred out of that total and redid the, the, uh, percentage. It's about twenty-five and a half.
And actually, because we are noting the three-year policies, that also skews the numbers as well, we made a note of that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it's more of a thirty percent increase that we, yeah.
It's a big increase.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's still a hard market, and we're still having a hard time placing coverage, so it's.
Big increase.
Mm-hmm.
And, and then, um, on the, on the employee benefits liability, if you turn to page four of the staff report, that limit for liability, is that a typo? It says fifty thousand.
Same amount of money.
I think that's supposed to be five mil.
Yeah, that's a typo.
Is that a typo? Supposed to be, so the limit didn't change?
No, it didn't.
It's still five million?
That was my, that was my question.
Yeah, okay, just, I didn't think so when I thought I would ask. All right, um, that's all I had.
Mr. President, I have a couple of questions, please.
Go ahead.
By the way, good job on, on getting these quotes, a very tough market, so I think we appreciate that. So, uh, back on, in John's question area on automobile liability, is that, is the two, is the two million something we budget annually? Is that money that's already sitting there and, maybe help me, I really don't understand, um, the composite approach on the automobile liability, because we've had significant automobile exposure events, as you, as you know, and I'm wondering, um, if this is going to be adequate. Elizabeth, thank you.
I'm sorry, your question is if we're.
My question is, do we fund the two million annually?
Yeah, we do set reserves for any payments since we're self-insured.
So currently, um, we do set a budget for, uh, projected automobile losses. I don't have that information in front of me, but I do believe, um, we budgeted far less than four hundred thousand dollars.
Elizabeth, can you speak closer to the mic? We're having a hard time picking you up. Thank you.
Yes, sorry, good morning. Um, so I don't have the budget numbers in front of me for what we, uh, budgeted for auto, but I do believe it's far less than four hundred thousand. We have, um, almost no claims since we have become self-insured.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so right now, the, the dollar's really low. We do have a two million dollar self-insured retention, so if we did have any claim go above that two million, but we are not, um, reserving for two million dollars.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then my, my second question is on public officials DNO, um, on your chart. So it says here that we're, that, that we're insured against any alleged or, um, uh, actual or alleged wrongful acts, blah, blah, blah. But are we covered somewhere else for, for example, unnotational, unintentional errors, um, the issues that are not related to being negligent? Are we covered somewhere else? Because this seems to imply that only if it's an intentional wrongful act that we're covered for DNO.
Um, the, the answer is, I don't know. Our coverages, um, tend to be very tricky, but if there was, um, any type of a lawsuit, uh, people tend to allege things were intentional. They seldom say it was unintentional. Um, so I, I can't answer the question, but I don't think lawsuits would come in that way.
Okay, thanks.
You know, a lawsuit's going to allege, even if the board had no intentions whatsoever to make an error, they're going to come in that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking that if, if somebody sues us and we're named a third party, and it may be unrelated to an intentional act, I'm just, you're comfortable that we have coverage for that, wherever it may sit.
Um, I'm comfortable with every claim has to be looked at, and the insurance company will provide a reservation of rights letter, and we'll look into that to determine if their decision is even a correct one.
You sound like a risk manager when you answer that question. Yeah.
Not everything is covered, you know?
Yeah, okay, all right, thanks.
So I have a, uh, I have a question under, let's see where it is now. Flood insurance. Did I lose it? I can, I lost it there. It was the, the flood limit going from ten million to five million?
Yeah, that's, uh, under property.
Yeah, Swiss Re.
Flood Zone A and V.
Yeah.
But why, why it's a reduction?
Was that a reduction? Yeah, we did see a lot of reduction in several coverages, and I think that might have been one, but I can take another look and see what.
Yeah, I think anything that has reducing in flood, I think we should take another, we'd take a, a look at, because we're, you know.
Uh, I almost have to go back and double-check that quote to make sure that it really did reduce, um, the coverage down to five million, um.
Our insured values have gone up.
Mm-hmm.
And then I also have, so we need to check that.
What, what, what is A and V? What does that even mean? I don't know what that means.
Uh, different areas have different flood zones, and there are many flood zones, but in flood zone areas A and V, um, they would have, um, decreased limits and increased deductibles. Any high risk, um, basically, there's less coverage.
Uh, so we have covered, we have twenty-five million dollars of coverage for other flood zones, but, but only five or, or ten, or whatever the number is, for those two zones, A and V, right? So those are the ones that are most likely to flood, I'm guessing?
Yes, and I'm sorry, when, um, when Director Bianca was first speaking, I didn't notice the, um, the, the other flood zone there. So, so yes, so in flood zones A and V, which are the higher risk, there are less, there is less coverage, um, and I believe those deductibles are also higher.
So that's probably the, the, the line item where we've had problems before.
Um, so even though I usually, um, reflect back to our loss runs, uh, the current flood limits are not based upon, um, any prior losses that we've had. Um, we did have, uh, a loss way back in two thousand and ten, uh, but this is just due to a hard market, and insurance companies do not like to insure in, uh, flood zones A and V. They would tell you that they like to insure for accidents, not sure things.
Can, can you, can, can you let, I'd like to know where A and V are.
Yeah.
I would need our, um, David Wilson here to, um, expand on that, but I can email you what locations we have that are in flood zone A and V on our property schedule.
And then I also have another, we have another one here. So, under owner's protective professional liability indemnity policy.
Yes.
We have another limit of liability, um, that's, that's changing from fifteen million to ten million.
That is correct.
And that's changing because we, we don't need it, it's too much.
Uh, this is all we can secure.
All we can secure.
This is all we can secure. Um, insurance companies on a hard market are limiting their capacity, increasing cost, so we could not secure any more than ten million, even if we wanted it.
I just don't really know what that means. You know, I guess this is the outside engineering firms, yeah?
Correct. This would be if, um, if an outside design firm, uh, made an error that cost us money, uh, in the construction phase. So the damage would have to be in the construction phase, and then the policy, um, would kick in to cover those construction costs.
I can imagine lots of scenarios where that would happen, too. I mean, that sounds, sounds important. I mean, this is one of the only ones, or maybe the only one that, there, I mean, their premium went down almost sixteen percent, but that's because it's a lower limit, probably.
Uh, yeah, that, that probably is why, um, I was a little bit surprised on that, and we did take a second look, but it is correct. And this is a policy that, um, we have an annual audit on, and the purpose of that audit is, uh, not to pay any premiums on construction that doesn't take place. So when you see the, uh, construction values at almost, um, five hundred million dollars for a three-year period, if they come in less, we would only pay, um, for what we actually, um, use.
So it's subject to audit?
It is.
Afterwards, yeah, okay. Yeah, it's, no, I get it, it's a hard market. I mean, so you can't just go out to the market and say, "We need fifteen million dollars of coverage." They'll be like, "Well, it's not available, we'll give you ten."
Correct.
That's how it works.
Capacity is limited.
That's ridiculous.
Or, or maybe it's available, but at a, I mean, anything's available, right?
You, you can start to fight and go to excess companies to, uh, give you different layers, but then you're really getting at, um, a lot of money with, uh, even higher self-insured retentions.
Huh.
And that's a maybe.
All right, so we, we're, we're asking for a little bit of, of additional information on these flood zones A and V, but, um, I'm guessing we can still go forward with approval of this item? Is that all right? Even though we don't have.
You're comfortable with it?
Yeah, I mean, what are, you know, obviously, make sure that that's the best we can do on that reduction from ten million to five million.
So Elizabeth, I'm reminded that there was a press release recently that talked about, uh, flood improvement work that, uh, CBWD did with the county that resulted in a fifteen percent discount.
True.
Would that have anything, would that have a bearing on this, or is that just coincidental?
So several years ago, when, um, it had not yet been approved, but it was still in the design phase, we had had our engineering, uh, continue to provide the underwriters information on that to take it into consideration even before we got final approval on it, um, them recognizing that it takes a long time for all the final approval. Um, so all of that has been looked at, and they continue, uh, to look at it, and will, will push.
Okay.
Um, at the end of the day, when it comes to property insurance, um, everybody wants their premiums, and we did have two fire losses, um, that are on our record that totaled about, um, both claims at half a million dollars.
And so the recommendation today is to approve up to this amount of money, which includes the five percent contingency and the authorization to make alternative carrier selections if necessary. So I, I would, uh, believe that's a flexibility you need to not only get the approvals, but to answer the questions that have been raised by the board.
Correct.
Yeah, that's good, yeah, the, it's worded, gives you a little flexibility, okay. Okay. Is there a motion to approve Eight?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Good. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed four zero.
Thanks, Blanca.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Blanca. Well done.
Good job.
Ah, Luis. I still think of this as the new building. Apparently, it wasn't quite as technologically advanced as it needed to be.
It's no longer the new building. The new building is next door.
What do you, what do you call the Coachella building?
The classic building.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, good morning, uh, President Powell and members of the board. My name is Luis Maciel, I'm the director of IT. I'm here today to request the board approve and authorize the general manager to execute a design-build agreement with Western AV for the design, installation, and support of a boardroom audiovisual upgrade. I have a presentation, if you'd like to see that, or if you want, I can read the entire staff report.
I, I have some general comments and questions, I don't know that we need to get into the presentation. I, I don't think that I need one, but that's just me. But I do have some, um, comments and questions.
Let's start with that and see what.
You want to start with that?
Go ahead, yeah, start with your comments.
Yeah, so, and maybe you get, you hit on that in the presentation, but just in general, um, I noticed that the request was for a little bit over eight hundred thousand, and that included the option to do additional rooms, although I think the focus of it is to do the boardroom, um, and it seemed like it's less than fifty percent of the overall contract if you decided to do the other rooms as well. And so my comment in general is, um, how, how do you get to the additional, uh, um, rooms? Uh, do we have to approve the budget for that today? And then if we approve the budget for that today, does that just mean you are gonna do them? Or is there really a reason why you wouldn't do them if we approved the budget? Um, and then, uh, another comment, uh, another just comment in general is, and that's the reason I mentioned, you know, what do you call the Coachella building? Is, uh, you know, I think about this building as a pretty fairly new building, and, uh, and then it just kind of hits me that if, if we need to do, uh, this much heavy lifting here, uh, what does that mean for the Coachella building? And I know we did some work there on, at the boardroom. I don't know, um, since I'm not that familiar with IT, whether it was, whether that was as extensive as, as, as we're doing here, whether there's other components that maybe we could have done there, we haven't done, whether you have a plan to continue to do more things in the Coachella office, and not just on the boardroom, but some of the other conferences room as well, or other rooms that, uh, might need some updates. So, so I guess it's just a, a more of a comment or question related to, if we're doing it here, what does that mean for the Coachella campus?
Yeah.
Um, and whether there's a strategy for that, uh, or not, and, uh, and reasons for it. So that's just kind of some, some, some of the thoughts that I was having. Thank you.
Yes, so, um, I'll address the Coachella first. So the Coachella building has been actively, uh, updated, um, when we see things. Uh, Dan Charlton, the, uh, Assistant General Manager, has done a great job in Coachella in upgrading the facilities. In fact, right now, they're doing some work for HR. Uh, we did upgrade it, uh, IT, um, about three years ago. We've got new lighting, uh, new electrical, we pull a whole bunch of wires, uh, we're constantly maintaining that facility because it is important for the district. Um, the boardroom itself is not as, um, complex as this boardroom, and therefore, we were able to do some of the work internally. Um, it is functional, it is not where we want it to be at because it's missing a lot of the automation that is in this project. Um, so Crestone is a, uh, technology that is used primarily to automate, um, audiovisual equipment. We don't have that skill in-house, and that, uh, is very, very expensive, so we didn't add it that in the boardroom and, and Coachella. However, all the appliances and all the audiovisual equipment that we bought, it's enterprise level, and so once this product is done, uh, but I'm sorry, this project in, in, um, Palm Desert, the goal is to go back to Coachella and automate that, uh, system as well, to make it more, uh, intuitive and easy to use by the operator. Um, and so we had a, we had equipment available to upgrade Coachella in the meantime, because we realized that we can't do both at the same time, because obviously, these projects are costly. And so we needed to go back to, to Coachella as a request of the board, and so we took that initiative ourselves, um, and, and got it together, uh, operate, um, sorry, the facilities guys, uh, did a great job over there, upgraded the lighting, upgraded wiring, my staff, uh, added all the, uh, AV components, uh, and so we got it functional again. It's, it's up and running, it does need a little bit more. So the, your answer to Coachella is, is equally important to this facility, because we understand that we have, uh, you know, a large population on the east side of Coachella, and the direction for the general managers to maintain the facility and to continue to, uh, upgrade it and keep it fully functional. Now, as far as the second question, um, can we do half of the building or the boardroom and not the other rooms? Um, we are opting for doing everything at once because it's more cost-effective. for doing everything at once because it's more cost effective. So when you mobilize, when the companies have to mobilize staff, you know, logistics and things like that, it's a lot cheaper for us as an organization to to pay for this upgrade as a whole. Um in addition to that, some of the components and the conference rooms are basically uh failing as well. And so we spend a lot of time maintaining it. And we feel that it's those are critical facilities um for the uh operations of the uh the business operations of the district. And so the also the systems are interconnected. When this facility was put together, was built, the other um training rooms were sort of interconnected to these rooms. So when if we undo that connectivity, we're going to have more issues as well. So for instance, the board uh the training rooms are outflow or um uh over uh what do you call it?
Overflow.
Overflow, thank you, for board meetings here. So if one day we have a contentious board meeting for whatever reason and we get a lot of people in in here, we can uh still host other uh citizens in there in that room, including the atrium. Um as you can see in in the proposal, the proposal is extremely uh fair compared to the other ones. Uh we are doing everything we can to minimize the financial impact. For example, one of the things that um we're not doing that is very trending right now is to have digital displays for the board members. That's about a hundred thousand dollar uh you know uh add on. We don't feel we need that. Uh we feel that upgrading the training rooms is more uh important than actually having some fancy displays that show, you know, uh the board uh the board members' names. Um we are uh replacing this display and adding another one there. We're having two one hundred inch displays. But the atrium stays and we're going to recycle. We're going to use these monitors as spares for the ones in the atrium. Think because these displays are fifteen years old and they they they're about to fail. But we got four technically that we can utilize in that room. And eventually, when we go through them, we'll replace and upgrade that wall. So we've done a lot of uh very mindful uh financial analysis to to present a a sound project that I think is very much needed, given the circumstances with equipment. I mean, I think you have experience, uh the technical difficulties we have, uh you know, we gone through here. And so the equipment is technically fifteen years old now. Uh some of the components were actually designed in two thousand and five, so we're getting into a twenty-year-old technology. And then, you know, conferencing has revolutionized quite a bit. Uh we have one camera that is have there's got very low resolution. We're gonna add four new cameras. Uh we're gonna have the ability to have um multiple profiles for this room, for training workshops and obviously the boardroom. Uh so it's a very critical business need. Um and I think uh the smart approach is to upgrade everything at once.
Luis, uh and and I I'd say that, you know, I'm supportive of doing whatever we need to do.
Thank you.
To make sure that things are working, that we're facilitating um community input, that we are upgrading training rooms, conference rooms. Um but I'd say that in general, I feel like um we've been transitioning uh out of having study sessions um even in the Coachella campus. Uh we we used to have um uh, you know, I I've been here for eight years now. Uh but we used to uh try to go back and forth between the Coachella campus and the Palm Desert campus, understanding that we cover a large area, that the board members um are from um from different areas in the Coachella Valley. And so we were trying to kind of do that and we did it for several years. And and I almost feel like um over the last two years, maybe, um I don't know if COVID just kind of happened to happen as well, but but it also seems like, I don't know if it's a technological um problem, but you know, I can't remember the last time we had a study session in in the Coachella um um Steve Robbins' um training room. And so to the to the extent that we continue to do upgrades uh on these uh training rooms, you know, I'd like to put some focus on uh um, you know, and these are comments for the rest of the board and for the general manager as well, and and what we got to do in Coachella so that we can continue to keep that flexibility. Um otherwise, I feel like we 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 are um um creating a situation where we continue to just say, well, we're going to have study sessions in Palm Desert. And that's that's what we're going to do um until until we figure out something in the Coachella campus. I don't know when that something's coming, but but it feels like it's been a while. It's been a while since since we we really haven't, I can't remember the last time we had a study session in that in that.
Well, I can assure you that uh the facilities, I'm sorry, I can assure you that the facilities are being maintained. In fact, uh for the Romans, um room, we actually have a project scheduled and with the new budget. Again, within the operating budget, we're going to be upgrading the projector, adding a display. So uh our the direction from um um the managers to maintain.
Look, I I know I'm kind of deviating. I know, you know, this is an item for for this, it seems for this particular campus, but but as it relates to to upgrades that we're doing uh in in the district in general, um I I just I I I want to make sure that we don't uh I at least from a personal, you know, board, just one individual board member, I I don't want to find myself in a situation where I, you know, we we get away from the Coachella campus and it's just, and you know.
And if I may, uh if I may, in regards to the meetings and why they've been held in Palm Desert for the last two years, it is a it it is a technology um uh issue or challenge here under um with us under COVID and the teleconferencing requirements, we were not able to meet those legal requirements to allow members to uh or allow us to hold hybrid meetings from Coachella. The upgrades were completed um in February. As you notice, we transitioned slowly back into Coachella starting March. Now that we have the technology, we can hold meetings again in Coachella. The Romans training room, um as mentioned, is still not there. There's still a lot of work for us to be able to hold hybrid um board meetings from there. We can do it from from the board chambers, but in order for us to meet all the requirements under AB three sixty-one, we have to be able to provide streaming out of that room and we don't have the capability. So um you know, we can do things.
So that's my that's my point.
Yeah, we can do it, but it it does require budget budgeting that we don't necessarily have at this point.
I understand that. So 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 let's balance the budget and and let's balance um where we make the investment. And and so um, you know, when you bring this item and it then seems like, you know, that says we have the option to do for other rooms and and you've you've explained why the, you know, maybe that's necessary because they're interconnected. But but I I'd like to, um and I know we've been having this conversation for two years about the technology limitations in the Coachella office. And so it's just it's just a comment so that, you know, we don't just make a note of it. I wouldn't want to be here another year.
No, you're right. But actually, if you look at if you look at it right now, we upgraded Coachella before we upgraded this facility for that reason. Like the boardroom is better, it has more functionality now than this boardroom.
So at least we can do workshop. We I mean, we did a workshop.
Sure.
About two weeks ago in the in the.
In Forbes.
Correct. And uh and it's that so, but but I agree. It we need to be able to continue to be represented in a presence in uh in the eastern Coachella Valley. And so let's.
So I'll say I look forward to another proposal to do what you got to do in the in the training room.
In the Romans.
Absolutely. Yeah, and it's actually already in in the plans.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
I was just gonna add, I think we did a proposal back. It was obviously some years back that didn't uh quite make it through, but I think we had looked at upgrading uh Forbes, uh Romans Auditorium and some some years back. So we can, there's definitely, there's always, staff's intent has always been there for us to update both as well.
Thank you.
And I, you know, just as a matter of a quick summaries, you know, document control was upgraded, the facility itself, the lobby, customer service, like I said, IT, HR has been remodeled. We built a new control room that I hope you have an opportunity to see. The uh old reservoir was decommissioned. There's a new water line. There's a ton of projects that are being going on in Coachella to ensure that facility is fully functional. It's also uh our backup for everything and vice versa, right? So both facilities are equally important for the district.
Thank you.
And that's our commitment.
Thank you.
No, it's a good point. Good. All right. Well, I mean, uh just looking at what's before us today, this project appears to be, I mean, you don't have to convince me that we need to improve our technology here. We've had so many meetings when we've had to stop and and try to fix it. Um so I'm I'm in favor of this and it seems like a really good firm.
Plenty of experience, yes. It is the best. Uh we have updated the the rating uh to ensure that cost has a higher weight in the selection process, and I think that's showing as well.
Yeah, and they were significantly less money, but they also seem to have really good um preferences. Um yeah, I mean, all the water districts that we might want to compare ourselves in cities.
Yeah, there is one caveat that I do have to make you aware of it is that there are supply change issues. And so therefore, we gave us ourselves until the end of calendar twenty twenty-three because Crestone told us uh that they're having uh they're moving manufacturing to out of China and that's going to potentially can create a delay. So.
Yeah, understood. All right. Is there a motion to approve eight J?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Good. Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed four oh. Thanks, Luis.
Thank you very much for the support.
Yeah. Okay. So under the ordinances, um nine A, we have the first one is on the domestic water rates.
Good morning.
Carrie.
Um President Powell, members of the board again. Um so um we do have uh two ordinance for approval, which is a domestic, which is the first one, and a canal and the second one. Uh we did only prepare one PowerPoint presentation uh combined uh for both, um if that's okay for me to kind of go forward with that. Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Can I can I just ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Because I mean, obviously, we've seen this. Um and I tried to figure it out, but I couldn't. Um the at the March, I'm sorry, at the at the May eighteenth special meeting, we were showing, the presentation showed a five percent increase on domestic and that it generated a a um some things. And we were told that we needed to get the all-in-debt coverage ratio i- at a minimum of of one point five.
Uh twenty-five was the.
Well, that's not what was in the presentation. It was one point five. I went back and looked at it this morning. If you look at the May eighteenth presentation, it says that the minimum all-in-debt coverage ratio was one point five and that and that the proposal was a five percent increase. And and it looked like we had some room to drop down to that.
That's correct.
But but now I'm looking at today's presentation and it gets an all-in-debt coverage ratio of one point two seven, which apparently now the the hurdle is lower at one point two five. I don't know why. And uh and yet the rate increase went from five percent to five point eight five percent. So I so now, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It's like the the rate went up and at least as a percentage, there was probably an error in in the presentation last month. It's I I don't know. I mean, you tell me. But but what what we're looking at is we went from five percent to five point eight five. So it was a higher rate increase. And and yet, our debt coverage ratio is lower. So how does that happen?
So let me explain. So um the one point five that we presented is what um the finance department, you know, based on the presentation that Darren had done on our credit ratings, you know, the the finance department are, you know, recommending a one point five. But on our debt covenants, uh specific for domestic, the minimum is one point twenty-five. So the last direction from the board was to get it to that minimum that's on the debt covenant. As for the percentage rate increase difference, unlike the other rates where the percentage was based on the rate itself, um the domestic, uh if you call in the cost of service last year, that five percent is not based on the comparison of rate to rate. It is uh the total comparison of the total rate revenue needed to us to supplement, I mean, to to cover the cost. So actually, based on your direction, the five percent is actually now at two percent. So that's a total revenue that's needed, rate revenue uh because of the components of the domestic, it has tier rates, it has fixed component.
I I get it. So it's kind of apples and oranges. I mean, the the way it was presented last time was a five percent increase. And and there were no rates provided. So the actual rates, I don't think we were even in there. They were at the one before, but but at the eighteenth, they weren't. And so, you know, we're trying to see how we got from there to here and we're comparing an apple to an orange. We're the five percent was probably really seven or eight percent. I mean, who knows what it looks.
It was um.
I have no way of calculating it. And and now we're looking at five point, I mean, so when a domestic customer looks at their bill and or or, you know, they look at what we're doing here, they want to know what impact does it have on me? And and the answer is five point eight five percent. That's how much your rate's going to go up when you combine the fixed and the, you know, and the and the other charge. Which which is, I mean, I just feel like when we got the presentation on on May on on uh May eighteenth, that five percent was something else. Like you said, it was revenue.
Yeah. So so the percentage that we used um was based on what was done in the cost of service last year, because it said five percent on last year's presentation on the cost of service. And again, for domestic, it was based on based on total rate revenues, not percentage percentage. So um the prop two eighteen rate that's uh was being proposed last year was actually six point fourteen percent. So if you just want to look at the rate itself, on average, it was six point fourteen. Uh but now it's at five point eighty-five.
Right.
And the total rate revenue went from five percent to now two percent. So we made some adjustments on the drought consumption to kind of help it a little bit more to kind of get the rates lower to meet what you had asked us to do is get that five percent, which is the rate revenue total, lower than what it is. And also while we're still maintaining, covering uh our debt covenant requirements and also the operating expense uh revenues exceeding operating revenues.
Carrie, I I I just say I I completely agree with President Powell that, you know, I I think I was assuming also that the five percent was five percent increase of the rate and not the and not the revenue. Um and that when the customer hears about rate increases and percentages, they think about percentages or a rate increase on their on their on their rate. Um so now I'm I'm a little bit confused and 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 I know you're going to go to through a presentation and would like to remind you of the comment that I made last time. And I think we we all kind of were, you know, we were thinking zero or that five percent. And we wanted to see how close you could get to zero by trying to, you know, get down to what whatever debt ratio you needed to meet, which might have been the one point two five or I don't know which one. So um so uh I guess I I I'm like fifty fifty right now, you know, about to go with your recommendation or to just go with zero. I think last time I said, look, uh zero, we can't afford zero. We're, you know, I I so so I I guess I'm asking you, as you go to your pre through your presentation, try to convince me or the board why we can't go to zero. Uh because because I'm 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 a I'm I'm thinking, maybe maybe we don't need to do a rate increase. And and I'm I'm kind of kind of confused already. So so um I I kind of that's that's my ask. Otherwise, I might not feel comfortable if I don't fully understand what's going on and and I'm just not gonna, you know, I'm I'm I can't make a decision. So so that I just I thought that'd be fair before you get into your presentation.
Yeah, I agree. So what is the, before you you go through this, what is the absolute minimum number that you need to maintain your required debt service coverages covenants?
One point twenty-five.
I mean, what percent of increase in the rates do you need to implement today to maintain that one point two five?
So this one that we're presenting, which is uh in total rate revenues at two percent and then underrated stuff, again, it's an average five point eighty-five. I guess because it depends on the components, it has fixed variable, the tiers, it's hard to kind of come up with a full.
So are you saying then, Carrie?
This is the minimum that we need to.
If we approve anything that's below the recommended rate increase, that we are that we're going to be out of compliance with our debt covenants?
That's correct.
We try. We really try to get it.
To get it lower.
And and to speak. The one point two five.
Which means what? We'll be out of compliance, which what happens?
Um, we have existing debt service right now. So we have a loan from State Water Resource Board um that's existing now. And we also recently got approved um over the USDA loan for our north shore and. No, but their debt service, they are on the.
Those aren't hooked together, is what we're talking about.
They're domestic loans. I'm sorry, maybe I didn't understand.
Those those USDA, those things are not hooked together. There's not covenants on that on what rates we have to do. I don't know.
We have a letter of condition that we need to supply them a record of our financial. They need to make sure that we're able to pay our debt service coverage payments for both. Yes.
That's easy. The letter, right?
No, it is part of the. No, it is part of the, it's, it's an agreement that we signed to, for them to give us the loan. So we have to comply with those.
And tell us that in the things that you're telling us right there, we just mentioned USDA.
Director Bianco, is your mic on?
Just mentioned, what else? That was another government thing.
So we have an existing loan now for Highway 86 from State Water Resource Board. And we also have an existing loan, but when we draw with USDA for the North Shore, the El Kyler and the Booster Stations. And those are existing agreements that have already signed. And we also sell that, sold that domestic note to, to finance the construction. Because USDA does not reimburse us until the construction is completed. So we were required by USDA to obtain an interim financing, an outside interim financing, which we went to board this year to issue that domestic note to help us pay for those projects, the North Shore, the Dale Kyler, the Booster Stations, and also Tank 7101-2. So we have three agreements existing now that have those requirement that we have to meet our, our debt service coverage for those loans. So USDA, we have not drawn any funds, but every year we're required to submit to them actually three years worth of financial projections to ensure that we have enough revenues to cover our operating expenses and also the estimated debt service payments on all existing loans.
Oh, okay. But you do acknowledge that you were telling us it had to be 1.5 four weeks ago, and now you're saying it has to be 1.25?
So we're recommending 1.5 based on that credit presentation. So if we wanted to go out again for future credit ratings, it's recommended actually higher than 1.5. Some agencies, the median is 2.7.
But now, but now you're saying we only really need 1.25?
Based on, yes, which is what we talked about.
On the existing agreement?
Yes.
All right. Can, can I come at this at a different approach? I, I mean, I think we're all kind of on the same page here. So, so we're not seeing all the numbers here. And it's a little frustrating, especially when I try to go back to the prior presentations. But there's, you mentioned it earlier, there's an assumption in here about how much demand we're going to have, right, for domestic water. And, 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 and you've modified that to say that we think that we're going to sell less water this year because of conservation. But we don't know how much you've changed that number. And that number affects the debt coverage ratio. So, so now we've, we're just taking it on faith. That the revenue number is right, but, but can we see those assumptions for? How, how did we come up with this revenue assumption?
So what we did was we took in a 10-year average in our most recent consumption for fiscal year 2021. And we did put in about 2.5 to 3% reduction based on the drought order. So we looked at history. So back in 2013, when we had that initial one, we looked at the pattern of how much reduction was going on based on the mandates. So we went more conservative and we actually only decreased the consumption estimates from last year by about 2 to 3%. So it's still, so it could be more based on what I think Mr. Burr will be presenting later on the order from, from the mandate. But, so we only decreased it by about 2 to 3% of the consumption.
Just a little bit.
So.
But that's a 10-year average and we had, you said you.
So we, we based it on trending, year to year trending.
So how many years?
So we did 10 years.
10 years.
Yeah. So on average, it's very slight. It's, so we went down from, for example, for the domestic consumption, we had 39 million CCFs. We just went down by 38.2, I think, CCF. So kind of like in total comparisons. So we based it on the consumption from last year and then we just decreased it slightly.
So, so was it, was the calculation based on the consumption from last year or a 10-year average?
No, from last year, from last year, because we had a higher year last year. So, but we're talking about the changes based on what we see year to year average change.
All right. So why did you mention the 10-year average? I'm trying to understand what.
So we're just looking for patterns of what the effect of the last drought mandate was and how quickly did it go down from the mandate? So we were trying to look at trending. So there's a lot of factors that we look into. We looked at the 10-year.
Didn't we go down 25% that one year?
Yes. And so it took them three years. So the mandate came out in 2013 and we were looking at the pattern. It was at 44 million CCFs. Then it took about a year to go down to 42, 43, and then it got to 40. And then it started going back up again in 2020. So in 2019, actually, was a little bit lower. It was actually 38. So we're going back to before the, pre-COVID. Cause COVID came in in 2020, 21, and more people were home. So the consumption might be inflated at that time. So this estimates of the consumption is closer to pre-COVID, which is 2019. But back then, back in 2013, we were at 44. And then it slightly went, it went down all the way to about 36 even. And then it slightly went back up again in 2019.
Sounds like you're just dealing with the delta increase and then you just subtract it from that delta increase.
Rationalize it. And again, it's hard to predict, but this is as close as we can get. We looked at every year trending. We looked at the 10-year average. We looked at experience from the last drought mandate in 2013. So I'm trying to make it a reasonable estimate.
Part of it, I mean, that, just the reality is there's, there's some conservation baked into the numbers now, right? I mean, the demand is a little heart, more hardened now than it was before because all the low hanging fruit, a lot of the low hanging fruits is gone. Yeah. And, and, and a lot of that conservation stuck, right? I mean, we've seen not 25%, but I think it's like 13% or something like that. That, that's hard, you know, it's real. So the opportunity to drop is less, right? So we're not expecting a 25%. I just, I don't know. I, I think that there's a lot, did we work with our communication and conservation department? To develop this?
That's, that's partly how, why we ended up creating the, the slides beginning on page 14 to give you the examples of the impacts of these rates. Home by, property by property type, as we did the same time when we did the cost of service study last year.
What slide was that, Jeff? We can try and bring it up on the screen.
Sure. It does begin on slide 14.
Yeah.
And the, the first, the pattern of these is the first one, you see the type of property you're looking at. And then the next slide gives you the calculated number change.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
The, the, the reality is we're, we're, we're going to do, if we do a rate increase, we're going to do it largely based on this, and maybe there's other assumptions we don't even know about. Cause we haven't seen how you do this calculation. But we're going to do a rate increase based on that assumption in order to keep our debt coverage ratio up. And if we change the assumption, that changes where we're budgeting our debt coverage ratio. And, and, and I only say that because this is not a financial decision as far as the health of the district. This proposed rate increase takes our unassigned reserves in the domestic fund from 13.4 million to 16.6 million. This is money above the target reserves that we don't necessarily have any need for, right? So although we can use it to pay off the, the, you know, the, the the, the loan, the, the loan. But anyways, the, the intercompany loan, you know what I mean? But, so, well, actually, no, this goes the other way. Yeah, it goes the other way. So I, I mean, I'm not inclined to do a rate increase when I see our unassigned reserves going up that much. And, and so could, could I, could I ask you, what is the impact of this rate increase in terms of revenue? Is it 2 million? What, how much is it?
So we, we're going up, so the total revenue is going to go up by 80 million. I mean, other.
Right. But if there were no rate increase, how much would it go up? Or down or whatever? What's the, what's the difference between this proposal and no rate increase in terms of revenue?
So this will take us below, I'm sorry, I don't have the number on top of my head right now. But this will have, will drive, the last time that we did, the last time I calculated this, it drove down our debt service coverage way below the 1.25 required.
Understood. But, but my question is more about revenues. Okay.
Doesn't it, if you go to where your, your, on your PowerPoint, it says proposed domestic water fund. Under operating revenues, you have projected 96.
Slide 11.
96.2 million.
11.
I mean, if you just take 6% of, of your revenues, right? So 6% of, of, it's, it's $6 million almost, 5, 5 million? Is that the difference?
Yes.
Right? So the rate increase generates about $5 million of additional revenue?
Got to be somewhere.
Right? Well, if your operating revenues is close to 100 million and it's around 5%, it's going to be about 5 million.
So originally the proposal was, I'm sorry, I'm trying to bring up the, the numbers. So we are going up, the original Prop 218, the revenue was going to be about less than 80, so about 74, 75. So this is kind of going to bring in that amount of money to cover, which is at 80 right now, proposal.
Okay, I don't follow that, but. Getting back to these assumptions that we don't get to see. We should see, by the way. So you have an assumption about conservation?
That's correct.
Where they're going to use 2.5 to 3% less water than the prior year?
Than the prior year. So the numbers actually came out to, closer to the pre-COVID, which is the 2019 beginning of 2020 consumption, which is at 39 million CCFs. For this actual year, we are at closer to 40. So we kind of took it back down to that level. Before the, the COVID, which is, you know, we were kind of thinking when people were home or people were using water.
I need to see this on paper because I'm just not following. So, so what other assumptions are there that have effects on revenues or expenses that that would also impact this debt coverage ratio?
So one of the other ones that we had adjusted is the investment income as well. So the original estimates were higher, but based on the interest rates, the way it's going right now. We did see a dip on our actual investment incomes. You can see that on the, the most recent quarterly report. So we adjusted that based on what we're projecting out and what's going to be happening in the future. Even with the feds do some movements towards the end of this year. We did kind of talk to our investment managers and to kind of give them a little, give them, give us an idea of how much they think it was going to be going down. So there was a little bit of a decrease on the investment income as well.
But aren't, aren't interest rates? Aren't, aren't as interest rates going up and wouldn't that help instead of hurt?
Well, the, 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 the changes that they're doing now, but we, it's impacting investments now. But we have some that's already been invested in the longer terms and there's, we cannot sell those off because the value of, we will, we'll, we'll end up recognizing a loss because of the market value decrease. As interest rates go up, market value goes down. So we do have some holdings that's there now that would lose value if we try to get new investments vehicles for it. So the overall impact of that is lowering our investment income. And, and we've been kind of presenting that on our budget to actual quarter to quarter. As you can see, we kind of talked about it on the summary as well, that we were not going to hit our investment income projections this year. It was coming in a lot lower than we had anticipated.
The, the maximum term of our investments is five years. So as we are seeing those older securities mature, the replacements are much less. So even though interest rates are starting to creep up, that's just versus what was available quite recently. So that's where we're taking a pretty big, uh, over period of time as our older securities mature and we're just not finding those same yields.
Wasn't our investment horizon supposed to be one to three years on those?
Well, I'm saying the maximum we have is five years.
Yeah, but isn't most of it supposed to be in the one to three year range? I know when I was on the finance committee, that's what it was.
It is, but I'm saying.
That's the investment policy.
But even, even three years, I mean, you're, you're going to see a big difference from what we had from three years. That we purchased a couple of years ago versus what's available now.
So on what we have on the screen, doesn't this show that, that you guys are budgeting revenues of 98 million for next year?
That's correct. 98 million operating revenue. So that includes.
That, that includes this, this increase?
Yeah. So there's a breakdown. Actually, I wasn't sure if you guys were able to see, there's the fund summary total, which breaks down, which is part of the attachment, which breaks down to different types of revenues.
But, but, but that, 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 that budget includes the increase, correct?
That's correct. It includes.
So wouldn't, so wouldn't, so wouldn't you say that the increase is, is 1.4 million? From?
From the current budget. It's, the sales is 1.6 to be exact for water sales. So it's a 1.6 increase.
Took in 96. That's your projected for this year. Next year, you're budgeting 98. So that's 1.4.
That's 1.4.
That's with the increase.
That's with the increase. So the water sales increase was about 1.6 million plus service charges of half a million. So we can see it on page three of the financial summary table.
Sylvia has page 1154.
Even if we don't do a rate increase, that the ending.
So, so in the past, we've asked, and this is the recent past. We've asked to see these recommendations against a no increase scenario. But we're not seeing that here. So maybe we need to bring this back and, and show it next to, you know, a scenario A, which is no increase. Scenario B is the staff recommendation, right?
Yeah. So, so yeah, so we brought back the no rate increase last time. So.
Yeah, but the assumptions have all changed. There's been several assumptions that have changed.
Well, the only assumption that changed is we adjusted the domestic consumption to meet the, to, to make it at a lower percentage increase.
I understand that, but that might have a two or three million dollar change on the number. We don't know how much it is because I've been hearing these numbers today for the first time. And it's not in the presentation.
We can bring that back to you.
Bring back the domestic one of you. But, and we'll bring back the consumption report as well, if that would help. So you can see what we have adjusted.
Yeah. And any other assumptions that, you know, I mean, I don't know if we have a good handle on this, this investment income and how much that really affects all of these things, but.
Well, if we, if we bring up that page, it has that detail.
What was?
It's on this presentation.
Page three of the financial summary table?
Page three of the financial summary?
In the HTML version, it's page 1000.
It's actually called the FY 2023 Fund Budget Summary Tables.
Yeah.
Attachment four.
Page number what? Three?
It's nine A.
You're on nine A.
So that one, the financial.
That one. Yeah.
And then page three.
Page three.
There you go.
So if you look at page three, there's a, we, the investment income went down. But that's already been decreased even on the May 18th. The only thing that changed from what we presented on May 18th to now is we slightly changed the consumption. We increased it back up because it was a lot lower. We had it at 4% or 5% initially. So we bumped it to, to the three, we bumped it. We decreased the consumption. We increased the consumption to, to kind of make the revenue higher so that we can meet the target and. so that we can meet the target and still get down the percentage, uh, rate increase lower than the five percent. And we stuck to that, um, methodology of presenting the percentage based on how it was presented and the cost of service, cuz that's how it was under report as well. So that's why in the domestic, we kept it the same type of presentation in terms of percentage rate increases, um, similar to that. So it matches the, 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 um, cost of service report.
Okay, so on this page, you, maybe it's a better way to look at. So this five point eight five percent proposed rate increase, five point eight five percent, that affects the first two lines, is that right? Is that, the, the service charge is the, is the monthly meter charge?
That's correct.
Yeah, so ninety one million, so let's say five percent of that, so it's, it's about four and a half million dollars of revenue. The, the no rate increase versus the staff recommendations, about five million bucks.
And part of it is the, the, um, the, definitely the expenses had increased, our supplies, from what we did on cost of service last year to this year. Our utility went up a lot higher, um, the chemical costs went up a lot higher. We had that cathodic, cathodic treatment as well, which is like a one time for twenty twenty three that needed to get done. So that contributed as well to higher, um, operating expenses than what we had originally estimated, uh, when we did the cost of service.
Yeah. You know, always lurking under all these numbers is the idea that every year we do this, we perform favorably compared to the budget by millions of dollars.
And majority of that, though, I mean, compared to last year, it was mostly the water, just the water purchase is one of the hardest, one for us to guesstimate. We really rely, um, on, um, the, the entities that's delivering the water to let us know how much we're going to be, um, purchasing at that time. So last year, the fifteen million, uh, overage from the actual, almost, you know, more than half, the majority of it, like, almost eighty, ninety percent of that was the, the water purchase. So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's just, it's just hard, because, I mean, there, in a few more presentations, there's gonna be another presentation on, on some more ordinances where we're gonna really tighten things down here in the Coachella Valley. We're gonna ask people to, to, to really conserve. And on top of it, we're gonna raise your rate. So that's what we're dealing with.
If I may, it, it probably just complicates the discussion even more.
Go for it.
What, what staff is trying to do is to make sure that our prior obligations under the board's direction to use grants and loans is preserved. And in order to do that, they have to, they have to provide for the debt service coverage, which requires an operating revenue stream. Once any excess revenues fall into the reserves, they can no longer be used to defray or reduce or alleviate that debt service coverage, because now they're one-time monies. They're no longer a revenue stream. So that complexity, um, enters in, and what we try and do is, is estimate the expenses so that we still have a positive revenue, so that we can assure the investors that the debt coverage will be met. There are a lot of things we can't control as much as we would like, and so we do err on the side of being conservative, because the risk and, and the, the loss of our ability to get grants and loans will create an even greater impact on rates, because we will no longer be eligible to get other people's money. We'll have to do Pago.
Yeah, and-
But there isn't a red light that goes off, that as soon as you hit one dollar below that limit, that, 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 there's-
So you're right.
Trigger something, no.
And you're not gonna hit it anyways, it's just a budget.
They give you time, they give you time to fix those things. I mean, there, there's always time to fix those things. If you don't, you know, attempt to fix your problems, then the scenarios that you're talking about happen. But, you know, you guys sometimes act like it's, there's a, there's, you know-
Well, we, you see- We're new to the loan grant business, okay? We don't know how these funding agencies are gonna react.
You see, where, from, from where we sit, we're, uh, we're looking at our finances, and it looks good.
That's correct.
And we have reserves, and we have more than we need in reserves, and we're, we're entertaining this idea of a five point eight five percent rate increase so that we'll have even more than we need in reserves. Doesn't make any sense. I mean, I think maybe what we should do is challenge the finance department to come up with a way to do all the things we wanna do. It's not like for lack of money, we have plenty of revenue and plenty of reserves, but figure out a way to do this where we get along with our lenders. I mean, we have plenty of cash. You know what I mean? It's just this one ratio that, it, it, it puts us in this sort of spiral where we're constantly raising rates and constantly adding to our reserves that we'll never be able to spend.
You know, I, I just, um, I don't know if we're gonna be ready to take a vote here today, or, or it sounds like we might need an additional presentation to clarify some things, but, but, but I do wanna look at it from a, from a different lens, and, um, kind of the lens that, uh, Jim touched on, and, and Carrie, you kinda mentioned a host of projects that we have some obligations for debt coverage, and whether we draw down it or not. And so it kinda opens up the conversation about, you know, I, I guess when, when you come back and, and you give us this maybe no increase scenario, I, I wanna make sure that, that you're being fully transparent as to what that means for, for projects, because I, I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't, you know, I wanna make sure that, that we're all being transparent. If, if what you're saying is, look, we're not gonna do a rate increase, but then we're also maybe gonna change schedules for some of these other projects, or we're not gonna draw down, because then we don't meet the debt coverage ratio. And so it, it's gonna become a, a struggle between rate increases for projects, what projects make it, what projects don't make it. And so, and so as, as we make those decisions, I wanna make sure that, that as a board, we, we have a full sense of whether we're saying we're putting projects on hold or, 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 or whether it's, you know, I prefer the, uh, Director Powell's challenge, which is, let's do everything that we're, say we're doing. Let that be the, the kinda option A. Everything moves forward as scheduled with no rate increase, but, but to the point that you can't say that, and, and then you have to say, look, the only way we don't get a rate increase is by, you know, changing certain schedules on projects. I'd like for you to be as, as transparent as possible so that, so that, you know, I don't, me or someone else is in, come out later and say, well, what, what happened to this project? Oh, well, you know what, no rate increases, project didn't move forward.
So, so, um, if we, if we can look at the screen, so I can hear what you're saying, Director Estrada. So the, the staff has been aggressively pursuing more grants than loans, and especially for domestic. So if you can look at the domestic on this page right here, if you look at the non-operating revenue section, so if, if you take a look at that, you can see that majority of the projects that, um, that have been planned is being supplemented by grant revenues, we're trying to use restricted funds. The only portion, um, the stuff that's in there is that eleven point eight million, which was that USDA, what we had to get interim financing for. So the USDA loan is something new to us. So this is a, a change for us, actually. We went after it, cuz it only had a one point twenty five percent rate. It's a forty-year loan. But however, it had such a stringent, uh, until we got into it, in the middle of it, then we found out they had all these requirements where we have to get it outside interim financing. So every year until twenty twenty fives, even though we have an agreement with them, and we're already using our interim financing to finance these projects, for the next years until we first draw in twenty twenty five, we have to submit financial forecasts, an average of three years, projections each year, guaranteeing to them that we make enough revenue to satisfy all our debts, to pay our debts and our operating expenses. So USDA come, if we don't meet those in the next twenty-three years, they can say, you know what, we're not gonna push through and give you this money. We don't know, this is something new with USDA. Now we're stuck with this interim financing that we sold a note for, so that we can do these projects. Uh, and this note is expiring at the time when we start drawing on the USDA loan. So that's, those are the oldest considerations that we have to do. So like what Mr. Barrett had said, is this loan thing is something new to the district, and we're trying as much as we can, uh, to meet all our requirements, because there are a lot of projects that, uh, needs to be done, uh, throughout the district. But again, it's a decision of the board of how they want to proceed on those projects. But at the same time, um, you know, you can see it's only, it's one point four, again, that's an estimate. Hopefully, the, 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 the consumption stays at the level that we're hoping for. We're trying to rationalize it, we're trying to make the best guesstimate that we can, the effects of the mandate, and we went really, really conservative, and we only took it down two percent, which is really not significant. We don't know what the impacts would be, really, for the mandate.
So, so that USDA loan, that eleven point eight, is that something that we're gonna start drawing down on? Or, or, or do you feel like we, we have it, but, but we're not gonna use it, but it's somehow dinging us, because now we have some obligations to meet? Although the, the USDA loan's not gonna kick in till twenty twenty five, or?
Yes.
Or how, how, how do those two work together?
So, um, again, so USDA, uh, will not pay us back any money or give us the loan money until construction is done. So that's why it was kinda interesting that we're trying to borrow money so that we can finance the projects, but they're telling us, finance it first, pay for it, and then we'll pay you back.
So that, I mean, that's the, I mean, that's take all, but only just to ping over some-
It's unlike others.
We have enough in reserves, we almost could.
Yeah, I mean, if that's, if that's what's holding us back, can we just say we have the money from Pago to do it, and then we don't have to deal with it?
We can use a, we, but probably have to change-
I don't know why we gotta go through all those hoops if we're just Pago. It sounds like we're getting back to Pago.
So, um, I'm sorry, if I can go to the next page, is it next?
And, and I'll just say this, I, I would be willing to, to wager that we will beat this budget. Cuz we always do, I mean, and it's, and it's never by half a million dollars, it's always like three, four, five, ten million dollars. This is the problem, you know, the, the budgets are conservative, we, and-
Which is good.
Yeah, which is good, but this is, this is the, you know, the rate increase being driven by this need to meet a, to perform in a budget that's, that we know is, is like a worst-case scenario, that we're going to most likely beat, meaning you're gonna raise rates, and then you're just gonna keep putting money into those reserves that, that, you know, that, then at that point, we say, well, I wish we knew. We would never would have done that, we never would have raised those rates, cuz we didn't need to.
So part of the stuff that I think we discussed in the past is bringing back your, your reserve policy, so that assigned reserve is based on, um, you know, uh, our current policy at, you know, at this point, so that's something we can review, we're trying to take a look at that and see if there's adjustments there.
We can do that, but how does that impact anything that we're talking about today?
So on that, if you lower it at assigned, then you'll have a little bit more for the, the unassigned that you can use for, for Pago, cuz your unassigned reserve is what you kinda have on your Pago that you, you're using to cash out.
I know, but we're not proposing on using any of the unassigned now. I mean, you got sixteen million, or thirteen million sitting there.
I, I don't know that it would help, um, but if we could go back to the meeting of May-
Eighteenth, yeah.
Uh, eighteenth, and look at, uh, item four A, and look at the PowerPoint presentation, which is the second attachment. There is the no rate increase, uh, slide there.
Yeah, but there's, some of the assumptions have changed since then.
Well, it's just to give you a sense of, some of them have, the, the operating expenses seem to be pretty close to what-
Hit escape out of that, Yolanda.
The, the only thing that changed is the consumption from what we presented on May eighteenth. We didn't really touch any, we did not change any other line item.
Hit escape, the actual button, escape?
Escape button on the keyboard.
So, um, so I, just reading the, the room and the dice a little bit here, it looks like we're not gonna pass this today. And frankly, I, I would appreciate, you know, full participation, and Director Nelson's not here today either, so.
HTML.
So can we bring this back?
For the domestic.
For consideration in two weeks?
On the twenty eighth?
On the domestic, yeah.
PowerPoint presentation.
So I'd recommend that since these are-
Slide twenty-two.
Ordinances on the agenda regarding rates, that the board takes some action to table or continue these during the next meeting, and then perhaps also asking your bond counselor or your advisor to, to look at and answer the question, what would happen if you missed your debt ratio? Is it a grace period, is it a financial penalty, is it a call of the loan?
If you could reduce, reduce that a little bit, you can see what's happening at, uh, reserve.
Carrie, and if, and if, and if, um-
I wouldn't look at this.
And if, when, when, when we're, when we're talking about those, those obligations and those specific fund, those specific loans, maybe you could be clear what those loans are for and what projects?
Okay.
And then, and then if it puts projects at jeopardy, what, what projects those are?
So do you need, we need a motion, so I'll make a motion and table this item.
Table nine A to, uh, June.
Twenty eighth, forty eighth. For the domestic, okay.
Okay, and what I will then ask staff to do is put together a continuing resolution authority, because chances are, if we're approving the rates on the twenty-eighth, we will not be approving the budget. Or it is possible that we won't be approving the budget. So we need some type of authorization to continue on through until the first meeting of July, or until the budget is approved.
Fair, yeah, I think that's wise.
Mr. President, I'll second that, but I, I just wanna say for the record that I think we're putting the staff in a really impossible, impossible situation here, because, um, I mean, you know, we'll see what you come back with, but without some sort of negative impact to our capital improvement program, which is something that we've been aggressively saying that we should be pursuing, I don't, I don't know how we're gonna get out of a, a rate increase at some percentage. So, you know, I'm, uh, as I said, I'll second this and look forward to the next report, but, uh, good luck.
Yeah, no, I, and I, I understand that, but, but this seems to be, this rate increase is being driven, in, in my view, by this, this debt coverage ratio.
That's correct.
And the capex expenditures have no impact on that. And the reserves have no impact on that. So it's like, you know, I, I mean, we're all kinda stuck in this box where we, we think that there's some lender that's requiring something.
And I'm thinking if, if there's a way to, if there's a way to keep that project, that, that USDA, that eleven point eight million dollars is somehow, if that's the driver, and we're willing to fund that through Pago by making some sort of money available from the reserves that requires some policy change, maybe that's an option. I, I don't know if that's, if you could take that one out, but figure out how to finance it differently, cuz you're gonna finance it at the end of the day with the money that we already have anyway, so.
But we haven't received the money from the USDA.
But that's what I'm saying.
Because we don't even know when it's gonna, what is the project's gonna be done.
No, we do, we know, that's right. We know, we know what project, it's a project.
Yeah, there's sufficient unassigned reserves to do that.
Yeah, so-
But we're paying for it anyway, so if it's holding us back and we're paying it with our own money, then why do we need to be hold, 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 held back?
So, so actually, this USDA loan, it's not, the eleven is just what they're thinking they're spending on twenty twenty three, so it's spread out to three, so it's actually thirty-three million, but out of that thirty-three, we're actually getting a part of that as a grant. So if we don't accept that, then we potentially might lose the grant funding-
Which is free money.
That's attached to it, which is free money.
Okay.
So out of the thirty-three, we're actually only loaning twenty-seven, cuz we're getting, um, the difference between the thirty-three and twenty-seven into a grant.
Okay.
So, and it's a great rate, it's one point twenty-five for forty years, and it's, it's hard to beat that. And if we sell, you know, as much as possible, we prefer to sell.
So we just need to negotiate this thing, get, convince them that, here, here's how I would approach it, I'll be honest, is, is to tell them, this is just a budget, and that, let's, let's see what the numbers look like, you know, as the year progresses. And, and there's a really good chance that the actuals are gonna get you where you need to be. That's how I would, that's how, and I'd just tell them that. Look at our trend from the last ten years, and it's, it'll say that.
Anyways.
No, I understand. Well, oh, you mean at the other agencies? Yeah. That may be true.
Right.
So there's, yeah, there's a motion, a second, so- So there's, yeah, there's a motion in a second, so so we're gonna see this again in two weeks. Uh, we need to vote on this tabling deal, so.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so we're gonna vote on on the motion to table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, that passed four oh. Yeah, sorry about the time crunch too. I know this puts us into this end of, end of fiscal year situation.
And and so we'd recommend the same motion for nine B, if I'm following correctly.
So the canal is that affected as well, or this is just for domestic?
Well, I think we can, I think we can probably, I mean, I suspect we'll be able to approve nine B today.
Yeah, so prior to, sorry. Are we still on, are we still on, um, nine A? No, we've moved to nine B, okay.
Just to nine A, yeah. So nine, nine B is canal rates.
Yeah, so for nine B, um, we were advised by our legal advisor to make the statement based on the letter that was received. So in light of the protest protest letter submitted on behalf of the Howard Jarvis Tax Payers Association by lawyers litigating the district's rate, it is, um, useful to make a part of the record of today's meeting the following two expert reports recently submitted in the canal rates case remedies phase. And, um, we actually have those two reports, um, that's gonna be handed out.
Oh, my gosh.
To you.
Okay. Michael saying we need to do this. I think we can get this moved out today.
So this is in response to the, uh, protest, uh, letters. Sorry, and I have to specifically name the the two reports. So one of the report is the expert report, um, of Richard Howitt, the director of ERA Economics LLC, Professor Emeritus of UC Davis Department of Agriculture and Resource Economics. And that report was submitted to the court on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. And, um, the second report is a technical memorandum, uh, from Greg Klumpner, NBS Director of Utility Rate Group, and Alan Highstreet of NBS Principal Consultant. And the subject of the the, um, the report is analysis of Roberts versus Coachella Valley Water District Riverside Superior Court. Uh, and it's dated April twenty-first, twenty twenty-second.
Thank you. So those be, those are part of the meeting record then?
And, Mr. President, also, there was a handout that was inadvertently, or miscorrectly labeled. It's labeled as eight G and it really should be towards this item ten B. So the letter from the Castello and Adelson is actually ten B, not eight, eight G.
Oh, okay.
So this letter had raised certain issues. Your special counsel, in response to this letter, wants to have, make sure for the record, the administrative record before the board today, before you vote on this matter, that you have the two reports that substantiate the recommendations today.
Right. Thank you. All right, so we're looking at these, this stack for application on the canal rates, which essentially is the fees that they're being trued up to, uh, cover our actual costs.
We're in year two of the recommended three-year full cost recovery plan for fees such as quagga and gate charges are the two most prominent ones, or are there smaller ones?
I I thought that we gave, we we gave direction that we were not.
We we are not raising any of the main canal rates.
The rate isn't, but there's the the quagga, just to get it to match the the costs that are being.
The real costs.
Incurred. We did that, we went up last year, or did we go up last year on those? So we're trying to get to the actual cost.
We're trying to get there, we, this is year two.
Over three years, yeah.
Of that movement.
So it's actually page six of the presentation, I can't have it out, but.
Yeah.
Sorry. How to get to the.
There.
Presentation itself.
You wanna go up?
Okay, thank you.
Is that twenty percent on the gate charges?
So, um, this is again, there there's no rate recommendation increase for, um, the commodity and the supply charge in the construction water. But the, um, the other, um, charges, again, like what Jeff has mentioned, this is the second year of the three-year plan to recover costs, um, of those, providing those services.
So we did a study that that what does it cost to do the gate work?
That's.
Zenheros, and, uh, we we realized that we were not, that the charge was not fully recovering that cost.
That's right.
That's what, and and the same thing with the quagga.
Yeah, for that.
Right? So so either we figure out a way to be more efficient and cut, cut our labor costs, or we, um, or we do this.
And and the direction the board was regarding the the main fees to keep those at a zero increase.
But but the, but the, the quagga surcharge was embedded in everybody's charge.
It it's, yeah, anyone.
So it doesn't matter if it's, if the cost cost us more or not, it's still embedded in everybody's charge. So everybody is equal, like, there isn't one class that's that's.
No, no.
That gets away with something.
No, but it just, we're just trying to recover the cost of of operating that system. You know, the coronation and security and whatever. All right, is there a motion to approve this ordinance nine B?
I'll make the motion to approve nine B.
I'll second it, and and we we have opportunity for additional discussion if anyone requests that.
You're, you're happy with this?
Happy is a strong word. I mean, like I said, I think it it comes down to the question of, do we find a way to perform these services at a lower cost? So, or or do we, or do we do this in order to recover the actual cost?
So when we had our study session, uh, a no rate increase, you're the one who recommended that we don't raise the rate. Okay, and that that was, that was a rate plus all of these other charges, they were combined. We we didn't, we didn't, this was not an option last time. Right? This was not an option.
So let me just go back.
This is new.
No, this is not new. So going back to last year's cost of service study, the.
I'm not talking about last year's, I'm talking about our.
I'm gonna get you there.
Study session that we just.
I'm gonna get you there.
Okay.
So as per the cost of ser, five-year cost service study, year one had a zero percent recommendation for the main canal fees. But this three-year full cost recovery regarding these more specific items that we knew that we were under, uh, incur, under, um, receiving revenue to pay for these specific charges. As part of our study sessions, including our most recent ones, where we were presenting the, uh, staff's recommendation for what the the main irrigation commodity charge and water supply charge fees would be, we lowered the recommendation from the cost service from two point six to to one point six initially. The board's direction, uh, we lowered that to zero at the next study session. I believe you may have missed that one. Uh, so this is in follow-up to the last board direction that we received of having a zero rate increase for the the main canal rates. But to proceed with the plan for the full cost recovery for these lesser charges. That was following the direction that we received at the last study session where we presented this. And did I misinterpret?
I think that's right.
Okay.
Okay, so it obviously has some impact on our customers. Are we at a place where we can vote? I think we are. We can give it a try? All right, there's a motion in a second, right? Is that right?
Yes.
We have a motion.
Jeff is questioning me. He's like, I thought there is.
I, uh, all right, well, why don't I give it a try and see what happens? All in favor.
I'm sorry, this is, this is an ordinance, so we have to do a roll call.
Sorry, roll call, vote, please.
Uh, President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
And Director Aguilar?
Aye.
Thank you.
So that passed four oh. All right, thank you. We'll see you again in two weeks on the other one. All right, everybody having fun yet? So, uh, this gets us to, um, ten A, which is a public hearing. And we do have a script, so I'm gonna follow this, um, script, which I haven't read yet, so good luck. At this time, staff will provide a presentation on the adoption of Level Two Demand Reduction Actions as outlined in CBW's Water Shortage Contingency Plan and as required by the State Water Resources Control Board. And following the presentation, we'll o- open the public hearing. So Scott Burrit, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Scott Burrit, representing the Service and Communication Department. This item is to update the board on emergency regulations adopted on May twenty-fourth by the State Water Resource Control Board, uh, which requires the board to adopt a resolution declaring, uh, Level Two Water Shortage and implementing all Level Two Demand Reduction Adam, uh, actions set forth in the district's Water Shortage Contingency Plan. It also prohibits the use of potable water for irrigation of non-functional turf at commercial, industrial, and institutional sites as defined by the State Water Board, um, except where permitted by Section nine nine six. Um, and that does apply to HOAs, and we're gonna talk about how that will work in a little bit. So these are the, um, the, the goal is to achieve, uh, water savings of ten to twenty percent compared to twenty twenty. Um, and I have the definition up here. Non-functional turf is defined, defined as turf that is solely ornamental and not regularly used for human recreation purposes or for civic or community events. It does not apply to sports fields, parks, um, et cetera.
And 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 do you have a definition of potable water?
Yeah, so that's the water served through our domestic drinking water supply. It does not apply to canal water, recycled, or water that's pumped from a private well.
Thank you.
So at the April twelfth board meeting, uh, the board adopted a number of demand reduction actions, which are indicated on that four twelve twenty-two column. Um, and so, uh, those are all actions in Level Two and Level Three of the demand reduction actions. Um, but there were a couple that, um, the first one was revised, the outdoor spray irrigation, uh, ban from ten AM to sunset. Um, in our water shortage contingency plan, it should be daylight hours. Um, and the other ones that have big customer impacts would be, uh, increase the water waste patrols and also developing a process to reduce our outdoor water budget by ten percent. So according to legal counsel, we, in order to do that, we would require a Prop two eighteen process. And so, you know, we could, going forward, we could incorporate our water shortage contingency plan into our cost of service studies in in the event that we do have to implement or take actions. And a number of water agencies are doing that or have done that already. So that would be one longer-term fix. And I should mention that we're required to take these actions by June tenth, so.
But you're, you're saying that we're required to decrease outdoor water budgets by ten percent, we're required to? That's in our.
That's what's in the water shortage contingency plan.
So the the time that it takes to implement that change would be?
Months.
At least forty-five days. Do we have, so so essentially what that does is it shrinks Tier Two.
Correct.
By ten percent.
Right.
And would probably cause our customers, at least some of them, to to be using more water in Tier Three.
It cascades through the other tiers.
Which would increase revenue to the domestic fund.
Correct. If it didn't drive conservation.
No, I understand, I understand, so maybe you get, maybe you get enough conservation to, so folks don't end up in a different tier, and that's gonna reduce revenue. But you also potentially are gonna be increasing revenue because you're gonna be at a higher tier.
Correct.
At least some people will. Right.
I haven't heard that the other water districts, I thought we had the all the same tier, the same water contingency plan. And I haven't heard that from the other districts.
So there's only one other water agency in the Coachella Valley that has tiered rates? And they're looking at the same, they're looking at what we're looking at right now.
Yeah, and maybe the, the question is, there's a tier, there's a declaration of Stage Two, which is different than a tier in a budget rate. So we're trying to comply with the requirements of a tier, of a Stage Two declaration, which includes working towards reducing the budgets. And if I'm not speaking out of turn, that is a two eighteen process, yes, but there may be other ways to enforce that without going through the entire Prop two eighteen process.
Yeah, so in, uh, in the short term, what we're, what we're, another option would be to, first of all, we're gonna do noticing to customers to try to get them to lower their consumption. And we could do bill messaging, um, to try to get them to reduce consumption and bring them down, uh, ten percent. But the other option would be to to implement some sort of drought penalty. It could be a nominal drought penalty to kind of model what that, what that reduction in the outdoor water budget might look like.
Correct.
And so what I wanted to get was a little direction from the board today on maybe what would be your feeling on that and what would be, you know, how we would implement that and bring something back at a future meeting.
Right, and we did a drought penalty last time, right?
Correct.
Which is something we can, we don't need to do a two eighteen process.
No, we don't.
So it could be quicker. Uh, and and we didn't, as I recall, we did not change our tiered rate structure or budgets during the last drought emergency. It was, it was just the penalty.
We reduced the wa, the outdoor water budgets by thirty-six percent.
We didn't change the, the methodology behind the calculation, but we did reduce everybody's budget, um, for purposes of drought penalties.
Right.
So, yeah, and and this.
Yeah.
And this is complicated only because Prop two eighteen is complicated. If you, if you change the budgets that everybody has now today, that is a two eighteen process. If you're going to keep the same budgets but have a drought penalty rate regimen in order to address this, this plan, that's not two eighteen and that's much more efficient and straightforward to start and stop. So we're not asking you to commit to that. We're just saying that in order to meet two point five of your shortage plan, to reduce the budgets, we're recommending the outreach and to come back with options that you're not committed to today to perhaps adopt such a charge in order to, A, meet this requirement, B, not have to go through two eighteen, and C, not to violate two eighteen. Is that correct, Scott?
Yes.
And I think that's the same thinking we went through last time is why we did what we did. So can we, do you think we can set up drought penalties that would look and feel a lot like a ten percent decrease in outer budgets, but people would still be billed normally for their, on the tiered rate system, right? With their existing rates? But then there would be this additional charge reflecting this drought penalty?
We would try to model it as best we could, but I think it would, you know, at the higher tiers, it would end up being, um, because we wouldn't necessarily be able to, you know, it'd be a really easy change right now, and we could get it done today if we could just reduce the outdoor water budget by a percentage. But, um, so we would try to model that on some. But, so we would try to model that on some, in some level, reducing the Tier 2 budget by 10%, maybe applying a drought penalty to tiers, you know, the higher end of Tier 2 and Tier 3, 4, and 5.
Yeah, I mean, really, if you, if you kept the rates just the way they are and the budgets the way they are, but then you took the top 10% of Tier 2 and applied the penalty to that?
Correct.
That would essentially shrink the non-penalty part of it by 10%. And then, and then, and then you do the penalty on 3, 4, and 5?
Yes.
So the top 10% of 2, didn't we do that? I haven't looked at it in so long, I'd have to be.
We did do that.
That's how we did it? Yeah, okay, that makes sense. That's, well, we're building a new mousetrap. We already have a mousetrap, yeah, so that, that worked.
It did work, and we could replicate that.
Yeah.
And we got people down to 25% conservation overall.
But you also didn't kill your revenue.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right.
You also did not mandate that there was no watering during the daylight hours. That was not part of your thing.
No, I think it was.
So it was recommend, last time it was recommended that we, that customers not water their spray irrigation during daylight hours. But the Water Shortage Contingency Plan has the ban for the full daylight hours and not 10:00 a.m. to sunset.
Is there, is there some way to change that so that we can do 10:00 a.m. to sunset? That's our own plan, isn't it?
Yeah, what I would, I think it would be challenging to change the plan right now because we have to go through a public notice process, which isn't a problem, but then we have to have it approved by the Water Board, the State Water Board.
And I approve something like that.
No, they won't approve it.
So what I recommend.
You made a mistake there.
Yeah.
What I recommend is.
We were not thinking about the summertime when it's 115 every day or 110. We weren't thinking about that. I mean, we just missed it.
Well, most other water districts have days of the week and are much more draconian.
No, I know.
And what I would recommend is that, you know, we're finding things that if we were rewriting this today from a staff perspective, we would change some things. So I think we kind of look at this when it's, when this is over, and we look at what we've learned and kind of incorporate that into an updated Water Shortage Contingency Plan. But I think it'd be a challenge to do it right now.
And, and I don't mean to be doom and gloom, but there's a good possibility that the state's going to require us to go to another stage, further stage, so.
This is just the beginning.
Yeah.
What I understand.
So, and if I could, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the, the commercial, industrial, and institutional non-functional turf ban. There are exceptions, so, and these are the exceptions. I won't go over them, but, so, you know, we, the expectation is that trees continue to be watered. And, but there's a lot of places out there that, you know, there are no trees, and the turf is right up to the, between the street and the sidewalk, and that area is low-hanging fruit to, to get converted to desert landscaping. And we're working with cities to possibly participate in their own turf rebate program that we could streamline and really use.
The, the one that, I have not spoken to anybody at the city of Indian Wells, but you drive up and down Hawaii 111, and there's turf on both sides, and they're irrigating it with non-potable water, right?
Right, so it doesn't, it's not impacted by this.
So they're going to be able to continue to have all that grass?
Correct.
Spray irrigated. Yeah.
Now, the only thing, I mean, we, we do enforce our water ordinance so that if there's runoff or other water waste complaints, we do enforce those and issue fines. So there are some expectations that people aren't wasting water, no matter what the water source. And I just wanted to share, because the HOAs have been really concerned. They've been calling and wondering how this ban will apply to them. So I did want to cover this slide. So first of all, it applies to property owned by the HOAs. It doesn't apply to individual residences within the HOAs. HOAs should review areas of turf where there are residents and determine if it's functional or non-functional turf. Water agencies may defer to HOAs determinations, and we reserve the authority to enforce the irrigation ban. But I think, you know, we did provide a comment to the State Water Board on our concerns regarding the HOAs and implementation at HOAs, because that would be a big impact for our customers. And, you know, I appreciate this method of, of enforcement where the HOAs can collaborate. And we are getting calls from HOA Landscape and committee members and board members who are interested in talking about getting rid of some of the non-functional turf. So we have a lot of meetings scheduled coming up.
Yeah, okay.
Scott, what impact do any of these have on golf courses?
All of our golf courses are, well, none of the golf courses are on domestic water in the CVWD service areas, so there is no impact on golf courses. But we would call on all customers to reduce their water consumption and consider what areas they might be able to, like the roughs, that they might be able to, you know, irrigate less or not irrigate.
Thanks. And just to remind me, we no longer provide an allowance for overseeding. Is that correct?
No, we, we stopped that quite a while ago, probably five years ago. And I just wanted to share this graph. This is what we report to the State Water Board each month. And I provided selected months. We could have provided other months, but these were pretty comparable. And we always go back to 2013 before the last drought. And what I wanted to highlight was that reduction from April to May. And so the board took action on April 12th. I'm not saying that this is, you know, I don't know what the cause in that reduction was, but I think people are getting the conservation message. Every other year it goes up. So, you know, we're, we're looking at that data. We'll be monitoring it and presenting it to the board periodically as part of an informational update. But, you know, we're hoping to get under that 2020 time, the 2020 amount of.
Scott, do we have a, do we know, and I brought this up recently, do we know how many of our customers have smart controllers installed?
I don't know. Let me defer to Jenna Schimman on that.
Like a general sense or that we've installed?
In, in, you know, just in a general sense. I mean, if we have 100,000 customers, do 30% of them have smart control? I mean, just kind of like that. Do we have any idea? I mean, we know how many we've installed, but it's nowhere near 100,000, yeah.
Don't we mention that? We mentioned that in the GM report?
Yeah, it is, the cumulative number is in there, but it's like, not very many. Just wonder if there's some way to, because that's, you know, the carrot and the stick. I mean, that's more carrot than stick, and it's.
Right. Well, we're going to be working with everybody to, to take advantage of our program.
You know, I mean, I, because when I look at this graph and I see that number, I mean, it's, it's, maybe it's people are getting the message, or maybe it's that we had a lower ET that month and the smart controllers took over and reduced everyone's demand. But I don't think we have enough smart controllers in place. And I think that should be an initiative of the district, is to make sure we get as many of these converted to smart controllers.
It looks like we just count acre-feet conserve, not actual numbers.
Oh, yeah, okay. I bet it's.
And we can update that.
I bet it's not 20%. So there's a lot of opportunity there.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe it's 20. I have no idea. And when I, whenever I see somebody and I ask them if they have one, they almost always say no. And it's like, well, you need to get one. They're free. We'll install them for you.
We'll push them.
We should. We should do more. We need to do more. Because that, you know, that could be, when you do have weather changes, like a cool month, you know, that number will go down all by itself if you have enough people hooked into that.
And if we do, and if we do enough of those, it will actually decrease the reserves because they're one-time expenses.
We can do as many, let's try to do 100,000. I mean, you know, that's a great tool. I'm, I'm a big fan. I think it's extremely effective. You know, people aren't out there looking at their irrigation system every day.
Right.
And, and that's why you get the smart controller, because it does that for you. Okay.
And I just wanted to run through the importance of adopting this. Complies with the State Water Board Emergency Drought Regulations. You know, you can read the reasons, but we are required to adopt all of the, all of the Level 2 Demand Reduction Actions. And the Coachella Valley water agencies have really worked well together in developing cohesive plans so that we can communicate effectively with our customers across the valley. And it ensures consistency in messaging. We're increasing our joint advertising through CV Water Accounts. We're also partnering with Save Our Water through the Department of Water Resources for an advertising campaign. So we're going to be doing everything we can to drive conservation. And that's my presentation.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, so this is the time and place for a public hearing to receive testimony on the adoption of Level 2 Demand Reduction Actions. And I hereby declare the public hearing open. Does anyone attending this public hearing wish to be heard? If so, please give your name and address and limit your remarks to three minutes. And I know we probably do have one. You've been so patient. You probably learned a lot about what we do now. Oh, my gosh, so.
Correct. Yes, Ms. Calamanis. Come up here, just make sure that the light is on, on the microphone, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much, President Powell, board, staff. My name's Alana Calamanis, and I live in La Quinta. The first thing, I gave you some, the words I'm going to use, so I may not get through all of them because I wanted to address something even more important first thing. All Colorado River water delivered to CVWD is for irrigation and potable purposes. Colorado River water is considered potable under the QSA and the Boulder Canyon Agreements. It is also used by MWD and San Diego Water District as potable water. You mislead the public by saying Colorado River water is non-potable as Congress and all agreements clearly show it to be used for potable purposes. So, moving on to my prepared presentation. The State Water Boards have given you the power to make local water conservation decisions. I would like to first start with the golf courses. In the Indio Sub Basin Alternative Plan, the chart shows that the cumulative depletion in storage for the Indio Sub Basin from 1970 to 2009 was, we were able to in 2009 start securing more Colorado River water, and it helped the sub basin recover approximately 840,000 acre feet. While this is great, it was only 45% of the cumulative depletion observed from 1970 to 2009. Golf courses were the major reason for this to happen. Golf courses are water hogs, but things can be done. State Water Boards have said that only fairways and green should be watered. While I think that would be great, you could try something more conservative. Golf courses that are watering their rough five or more days a week should cut out two days of watering. Those watering four or less should eliminate one day of watering the rough. With over 140 golf courses, the water savings could be significant. So I think that you should exert some leadership and start talking to golf courses about doing it that way. And how about the water consumption of the proposed surfing resorts? The evaporation at the proposed Coral Mountain Surf Resort was calculated by CVWD to 24 million gallons for 18 million gallon wave basin. How is it possible that excessive wind, wave action, and heat events? The reason is because the proposed wave basin is considered by CVWD as a lake with moving waters. Please raise your hand if you believe that a six-foot-high wave traveling almost a half a mile from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. every five to 10 minutes, 365 days a year, can be considered a lake with moving water. CVWD should have tried to investigate how to actually calculate surfing basin evaporation. I have seven minutes left. President Powell, may I have a few more, one more minute?
To read this? Yes, go ahead.
Okay. We have, we asked the comparable Kelly Surfer Wave Park in Lemoore for their water usage. They published they lose 250,000 gallons of water on hot days. That year, Lemoore only had 40 days over 100 degrees, hottest being 107. We had 140 days over 100 with 124. I also looked for validation from Seamus Charts to make sure I can get some kind of valid evaporation here. Just looking at the 140 days, we have 35 million gallons, much more than the 24 million gallons. And that, that was well a whole year. This was only 140 days. There's an EPA formula that shows 265 million gallons of evaporation. The water bill from the local golf course showed they used 260 million gallons. If CVWD, it's CVWD that propagated the myth that their calculations for wave park only use 20% of the water used by a golf course. There is no recourse, but you must halt the wasteful and frivolous use of the water for these surf basins and lagoons, as per the surf state constitution during this mega drought. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I apologize, I have a 11 o'clock doctor's appointment. I'm going to run out of here.
No, no, I appreciate your comments. Okay. Do we have anyone else wishing to comment at this time?
Mr. President, members of the board, I have a comment that came in via Zoom, just so that I, I'll read that for the record. The individual did not necessarily want to speak, but he did just want to pose his question, and I'll just read it verbatim. My name is Dan Farrar, and I'm the General Manager of the Ironwood Community Association in Palm Desert. I would like to get more clarification on how CVWD views the restriction on ornamental turf for homeowners association.
I think I was answered.
Great.
Well, I think that was.
And, and I think, Scott, you could, your department can probably be in contact. You can be in contact with Mr. Farrar and the HOA at Ironwood.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'll be in touch personally.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
I don't see any raised hands, but if there is, we do have two members. Anyone else who would like to provide public comment, please use the raise hand feature.
And then we, as far as written communications, I know we have received the letter from Ms. Calamanis?
Ms. Calamanis, correct, and that was distributed and will also be added to the record as well.
Were there any other written communications?
There were no additional record, written communications.
Thank you. Counsel Frey, will you please comment on the notice and publication requirements for this public hearing?
The requirements to publish this notice of this public hearing have been met in that a notice of public hearing was published at least seven days prior to this hearing.
Thank you. There being no further input, I hereby declare the public hearing closed. The board will now take up discussion and consideration to adopt Resolution 2022-28, a resolution adopting Level 2 Demand Reduction Actions as outlined in CVWD's Water Shortage Contingency Plan and as required by the State Water Resources Control Board's Drought Emergency Rulemaking. So opportunity to discuss, I mean, I think we covered the, the idea about the, the drought penalty being done in lieu of, so that it almost mimics the 10% reduction in outdoor watering budgets, right?
Yes, and we'll work with finance on, we actually are working on with finance just in case that was the direction you wanted to go in.
Scott, when we have drought penalties implemented, is there a warning system in place?
Yeah, so we could, last time we did kind of a shadow bill, and so we could, we could try to do something similar this time before it actually gets implemented.
Actually, once we do the public outreach, people can look at their bill, hopefully, and figure out if they're meeting their Tier 2. And I think at one point, 80% of our customers were within their Tier 2 allowance. A 10% reduction, we show them what their budget is and, and forecast for the next month what the budget should be, and they can reduce that by 10%.
But then the question is, for the drought penalty, how much, right? How much, is it a dollar penalty or a percent penalty? How do we know the amount that, that's effective, right?
Well, I, I think that's what we're kind of modeling with finance. And so, you know, last time we did roughly. And so, you know, last time we did roughly, it wasn't exactly, but we did twice the tiered rate. So at Tier 5, the drought penalty was $10 per unit, which I'm not proposing anything near that. I think they can be considerably smaller and still have an impact to reduce consumption by 10%. In addition to the increased advertising and everything else we're doing, hopefully we can get to, you know, that range of 10% to 20% savings. That's the goal.
Right. And do we have the ability to bifurcate that Tier 2 so that we can take the bottom 90%? Or I guess you don't have to do anything with that. You bill out all of Tier 2 at the normal rate, and then you take the top 10%, which a lot of users won't use the last 10% of their Tier 2. So they won't have a drought penalty. But if, but if you do, you use, you know, 100% of Tier 2. So 10% of that Tier 2 usage would be, would be subject to this penalty.
Correct, and we would replicate what we did last time.
Okay.
I don't actually remember. It was.
Yeah, it was pretty much a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody was.
Because it started, right? Yeah, in the spring. And honestly, it was interesting because it was very effective, I think. I mean, there was a lot of things happening, hard to know exactly which element was responsible for the 25% reduction. But, but we were able to reduce domestic consumption by 25% without really affecting revenues. And I thought that was, you know, because what happens is you're, you're Tier 1 and Tier 2 people aren't really, they're paying the same, except for maybe the little top of Tier 2. But then they're using, if they're using less water, they're going to pay less.
Right.
And then you got folks that maybe didn't get the memo, and they're still using the same amount, and they're going to pay a lot more, which covers that reduced revenue from the conservation.
A lot of people are in Tier 4 and 5 consistently every month.
Yeah.
And I don't know that we actually saw a big reduction in the folks that were in the highest tier. I think most of the reductions took place around just on that borderline between 2 and 3. Those people are already conscientious about their water use, and so they wanted to maintain that, that ability to stay within their budget. It's when you get beyond that that people are kind of oblivious to.
People are kind of proud by the fact that their bill says excellent or efficient. They don't want to be wasteful, and they don't want, yeah.
Or inefficient.
Or inefficient.
Yeah, some, some people, most people, most people are responding like that, and then some people don't respond.
Right.
But then they help cover the cost of all the other.
And if we, it does appear that we've had an uptick in applications for the turf rebates, and we generally look at them and report on them after they've been completed. So we do anticipate that at some point, you know, if that good news continues and if cities do contribute and have their own rebate programs locally, that we may, we may possibly come back to the board to supplement the turf rebate funds, but that'd be a good thing.
Scott, I see you have a PowerPoint presentation. I don't see that in my packet.
Oh, that was added last minute, and I think that Sylvia was going to circulate that.
I, I mean, I've seen it just because you flipped through the slides, but I hadn't seen it.
That's my fault. I was slow in getting it narrowed down when I saw where I was.
I'm online, you know, I didn't download, I'm online, and it's not there.
Correct. The presentation was provided after the posting of the agenda and outside of the 72 hours, so I do apologize that you don't have copies distributed.
That's my fault. When I saw where I was on the agenda, I started cutting slides.
Okay.
You'll send that to us?
Yes.
We'll forward it over, and it will be posted to the website following the meeting.
Scott, if, if you could just briefly touch on how we handle 2.2 Restaurants Can Serve Water Only on Request and 2.7 Agency Shall Increase Waste Water Patrols. How does that look like? For example, is 2.2 that we send out a flyer to all restaurants and let them know, or?
Yeah, so we're, we've increased communications. We've actually, we have the table tents printed, we're distributing them to restaurants. We will be communicating to all commercial customers after today, including restaurants, letting them know the table tents are available. We're working with the local chambers of commerce to get the table tents out to restaurants, and the reaction has been pretty good. We're getting calls every day for us to deliver table tents.
And on, and on waste, waste, waste patrols, what does that look like?
So, you know, I'm not sure that we want to go out and, we have a lot going on, so what I envision is that we have meter readers out there every day who are everywhere across the valley, so.
Yeah, I think that's how we handled it last time.
Yeah, so we do have one person who's dedicated to a water waste patrol, but I think rather than adding, you know, adding a position there, I would rather, you know, the meter readers will do a great job, and we can make it easy for them to report. It'll be the push of a button on their handheld equipment, and it'll generate a work order to conservation.
Thank you.
And we have the same thing set up for non-functional turf. When they're out there reading and they're at an account that has what they believe is non-functional turf, they can just hit a button and it'll notify us.
Thank you.
You know, Scott, I'll tell you that, you know, when we put this drought contingency plan together, I was under the impression that that was our drought contingency plan, that we promised to follow in case of a shortage. But I was under the impression, and I believe I was told by staff, that we could change that as we went, depending on how things worked, okay? And so that, I was under the understanding that, that plan, and so we also have a number 3 and a number 4. And so I was not under the impression that the, you know, that we were going to be like a hammer. Everything that you said in that, so I'm about no on this, because I think there are some things in there that need to be changed.
I share that concern with you, and I was under the same impression.
And, you know.
Okay, so you were there under the same impression.
I believe that is in the water shortage contingency plan we do.
And I agree with you, and not only, not only from our own agency perspective, but but even when, as you mentioned, several agencies worked on the regional urban water management plan, and, and they tried to come up with a general, a one shortage contingency plan, right? That everybody kind of, everybody had the same. And I think even as that was being put together, it was, it was kind of with, I thought to the assumption that, that agencies could kind of, because not everybody has the same issues, like for example, you just mentioned the outdoor, the outdoor budget. There's only two agencies out of maybe the five, six agencies that put the regional urban water management together. So even in that example, you know, how does an agency that has 10% outdoor budget reduction, they don't have the ability to do that? So, so I kind of, I kind of feel the same thing where it's like, I was under the assumption that it wasn't, you take the full, you know, 2.1 or 2.8 and implement it. I thought, I thought, you know, agencies could have the ability to pick and choose which ones they needed to do from that. So, so I'm kind of, I'm kind of saying the same thing. I, I was under that assumption.
And I would just say, a lot of water districts throughout California were under that assumption, and that a lot of the comments at the State Board hearing before they adopted the regulation made that comment, made the same statements that are being made here today. And the State Board took that into account and denied it and said, no, all the ones that are in your contingency plan as of the date that you adopt this part of your urban water management plan shall be imposed. And people had the same response and comments that you're making here today. So that was not the intent of the conservation, a lot of people would say, of the, of the plan that the time that they were adopted and sent to the state, or at the time the governor came out with his executive order, it was done at the State Board level.
It's not fair that we were deceived in putting that thing together, where we would have spent more time than we did on it. I mean, going through that with a fine-tooth comb on every single aspect on that. And the reason why we didn't and other districts, other water districts probably didn't do the same thing is because of what we were told.
Told by who, though? I guess my concern is, we were told by the state just in the last two months that you had to do all of your measures in your contingency.
When we were putting the plans together.
Yeah, we thought we could change it. That's, that's what you're saying.
So did everybody else, here's my point.
That's correct, that's what I'm saying. That is not, that is not fair.
So our hands are mostly tied here, it sounds like, but we can still finesse that 2.5 by doing the.
Right, we will implement the best way we can with legal constraints.
Yeah, I think we can do that, okay. I mean, is there, is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-28? Right?
I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll second it, John. Do we have any other discussion before we vote? Nope. Then in that case, and we can just do a regular vote here, right? Yes, all right, so all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
So it passed 3-1? Okay, thanks, thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Yeah. Let's push those smart controllers, too. It's not, it's not even in here. Well, right. So written communications, I know there were, I think there were three in the online packet, we saw those.
Yes.
Board general comments, the Director Aguilar? Bianco?
I just have one comment about. August, that I wanted to know if there was anybody else who wanted to change our, we're usually off.
The board usually goes dark the second meeting in August, correct? So this year it'll be the 23rd.
I'd like to see if this year, if there was any, anybody who wanted to, to go dark the 9th instead of the 23rd.
By in August? I don't think it matters to me.
That's why I bring it up. It may not, may not matter to anybody.
It doesn't matter to me. I'm flexible.
Yeah, I don't know what staff's going to.
Doesn't matter to me.
So Director Bianco is proposing that we not meet on August 9th in August, rather than August 23rd. So skip the first meeting in August, rather than the second meeting.
So we just have to promise that we're going to work hard to get our budget approved in, in July.
Correct.
On our continuing resolution, right? Do we have a commitment from the board to do that? Because otherwise, we're going to be meeting in August, on August 9th. All right.
Did the board, is the board okay with that? So we can make the necessary changes and advise staff just for scheduling purposes?
Fine with me.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, there's, the only thing I've got on the calendar is there's a California Special Districts Association Conference that's taking place in Palm Desert from the 22nd through the 24th. But that's not something that, it's not something we typically attend because we've always got a conflict with a board meeting.
Yeah.
With the exception of that particular conference that happens to also be local, which some of us may have already registered for.
Well, you'll make it by lunch.
Yeah.
You'll miss the morning.
Or I'll just cancel my registration.
Yeah, okay. So Director, yeah, thanks. Director Strata?
No comments.
And I'll pass on comments. Do we have any board requests for future agenda items? No. Meetings? All right, let's see if we can kick these down. May 24th, Director Strata, Oasis Mobile Home. And 25th.
Yeah, so the 24th was, was a pre-meeting and preparation for a big roundtable meeting that we had with multiple agencies, and so we prepared for that, knowing that it was going to be pretty important, and there was going to be a lot of folks there from both the state agencies and federal agencies that are working in that area to resolve some of the contamination issues in the eastern Coachella Valley, specifically on tribal systems. So, so we had a prep call for that. We, because EPA asked us to give a quick update or a presentation on all the work that we've been doing for the past maybe six, seven years related to identifying systems, creating projects, executing projects, projects that are in the queue, et cetera, et cetera. So, so that was the purpose of our preparation. And then we actually had the meeting on, on the 25th. I attended with, with staff, including Jim and Dan, Dan Reese, we missed Carrie, but she did help put together a lot of the material, so thank you for that, Carrie. And so the meeting on the 25th was, was a two-part, it was actually a three-part, but, but some of us stayed for the first part, others stayed for, only I stayed for some of the, the other parts, but, but the most important part, I think, was, was the first part, which was the morning part, where it was public agencies, which included our agency, multiple departments from the County of Riverside, the supervisor's office, the assembly member's office, the congressman's office. The congressman was there in person, the supervisor was there in person, EPA, USDA, BIA. And it was, we were hosted at the Torres Martinez Tribe at their admin building. It was, it was a, it was a large group. I'd say it was maybe 20, 20 people, 30 people. And, and so we went down, down the agenda, again, heard updates from EPA, heard updates from CVWD, heard updates from the county, from, from the tribe, and then kind of had a long conversation about next steps. We did share with them that, that we already met to discuss a lot of these issues at our task force meeting that, that we have now on a bimonthly basis, but we did let them know that we used to meet on a monthly basis for several years. But we agreed that perhaps it was, it was good to create a separate working group that just dealt with our partner agencies that have some sort of involvement in ensuring that, as it relates to tribal projects that we know require Eastman acquisition and some extreme coordination with the BIA that perhaps they can help in, in kind of pushing those things forward. It seems like a lot of times, from experience, the, the design is easy, the construction is easy, but without the help of the BIA and the tribe, we tend to get stuck maybe on the environmental and the right-of-way acquisition component of projects. So, so it seems like we might be able to participate in a, in a, in a working group that's going to be made up of CVWD, BIA, EPA, and hopefully USDA as it relates to projects in this particular area. I forgot to mention that this meeting was kind of headed by the newly appointed EPA Administrator, Marta Guzman. She seemed to be the one that, that called the meeting and really kind of brought everybody together. And also the Chair of the State Water Board was present, Joaquina Skivell, and some key staff from, from his office. I think Bridget Chase was there. She's someone that we work with very closely on several projects that, that we are heading here at CVWD. So, so I think it was, it was, it was a, it was a good meeting. I think it was something that needed to happen. I think it, I, I think from our perspective, we wanted to be pretty clear with everybody as it related to the amount of work that we're doing, how others can help, how, you know, everybody can, can take some responsibility of some portion of a, of a process. And, and I think our message was, look, we, we need some help with getting some of these things cleared that are maybe outside our realm and. and, and, and we have to go through a lot of bureaucracy, whether it's mostly with the BIA or tribal issues. So, so that was our message and I think it was understood. So I think it was a good meeting.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for doing that. Golf and Water on May 25th, Director Bianco and myself. I don't know if you wanted to cover any of that. Pretty. Yeah, well, yeah, first in-person meeting, I guess. So.
Director Bianco, is your mic on?
There was some good news there. Lot of interest, lot of new members.
Yeah, no, it was, it was. I mean, definitely a commitment there to make sure they have, that they're cooperating with the, the efforts.
So I, I did not attend the Salt and Sea Authority meeting or the Coachella Valley Conservation or the, um, ENE meeting.
Were you at the Salt and Sea Authority?
I, I was, um, that was a meeting that was held at the Imperial County Supervisor's Chambers. We actually tabled a lot of the reports that are given, uh, in these meetings, reports from the state, from the feds. Um, we, we approved the budget. Well, I think we, I think we did approve the budget, but we gave some direction and kinda, uh, come back with some reserve policies, et cetera, et cetera, related to finance, um, financial needs at the, at the, um, Salt and Sea Authority. But we, we did all, you know, we, we tabled all the reports because we, we knew that we were gonna have, uh, a pretty lengthy item, which was related to Cadiz. And, um, and so we opened it up to, to, to have that conversation. And we had several callers, uh, a lot of the, uh, NGOs, uh, not just maybe here locally, but, uh, in the region called, uh, expressing some concern, maybe opposition. And then we also had a number of, of, of other folks, uh, that spoke, um, in favor of it, uh, including folks, uh, in the, uh, in the public that were there in person. Most of the, most of the participants were in, uh, on calls, but there were some folks in, in person. Uh, and then it was open to a conversation to the rest of the, um, Salt and Sea Authority Board members. And, uh, the vote was, uh, I think, uh, unanimous with the exception of, um, Director Supervisor Kelly. Uh, but, but I think in general, the, the sense of the Salt and Sea Authority was that, was that, um, the, in a way was this letter of intent, uh, in any way, uh, proposing that the project circumvent any environmental review or laws or conditions and that to the extent that they could work all of those things out and that the project, uh, could, could move forward. The Salt and Sea Authority felt that receiving, uh, 3,500 acre feet of water for future projects and for future needs at the sea was a positive thing. So, uh, I think, uh, the majority of the board, whether it was, uh, Imperial County Supervisors, Riverside County Supervisors, the IID Directors, CBWD Directors, the tribe in gen, the tribe was very supportive. Uh, I, I think that, uh, uh, we felt that we had a, a duty and a responsibility to address issues around the Salt and Sea, which, um, a lot of them are related to the lack of having, uh, secured supply for, for, for the water needs at the Salt and Sea. As you know, right now, we're, uh, thinking about how to, how to secure some of that water supply for some of these projects. And so, um, we felt that as long as the project again could meet all the requirements related to CEQA and environmental review, anything that they needed to do to move the project forward, um, you know, they, they needed to do all that. And that, that's something that was made clear to them. So, um, that, that was, that was really what happened, uh, at that meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, we had a meeting with, um, here with the representative, representatives from Belk Farms on May 31st. And, uh, it was really just to share information and thought they had some really good questions on this, this, uh, conservation, this temporary conservation program that's being funded as part of the 500-plus plan. I don't know if I need to go into the questions, but, um, Robert was obviously taking good notes. We also had a meeting June 1st with the Representatives of Cities of La Quinta and Indio. I think the county was in there too. Director Strata, who was a Zoom. Myself and Jim and discussing, uh, their special fee that they're gonna, proposing to put on their utility bills to help pay for substations. And that discussion continues. It's a complicated one. Let's see, June 7th, Finance Committee, Directors of Strata Aguilar?
Yeah, it was a pretty fast one. We usually have more than one item, but this time we just had the, the general update report. I think it's the quarterly report. And, uh, I, at least what I got from the, from the report was that, uh, market's not doing so well, but, uh, but we, um, still, um, outperformed our benchmark. So that's, that's, um, although, you know, things seem to be going into the negative, we, we, we did come up, um, at least to the benchmark above that. So, uh, you know, I asked a question about when we might see things go the other direction. And I think the general answer was, hopefully by the beginning of next year. So it looks like we might still have to deal with this for the, uh, rest of the calendar year. But, um, it might, we, we, we might be going in the other direction. As I think one of the things that was indicated was that, uh, the feds might start increasing, uh, interest rates. So that, that might, that might be helpful. So that, that's, that's, that, that was kinda the takeaway for me. Director Aguilar?
Yeah, I would just add that, um, I think we had hoped to start the conversation about reserve policy changes, uh, which I know the board is interested in, but, uh, staff has just got so much of their plate that we're gonna hopefully try to get that on the next agenda, um, coming up.
Thank you. Ah, let's see, then we had the.
Right. Oh, sorry, next one's mine too. So I, yeah, um, on the 7th, I also met with, uh, with Steve and Zoe and Scott and Jim. I wanted to get a deeper understanding of the water assessment policy process and, um, and to go through the mechanics of how we analyze projects when they come in. It was really informative and useful and we were able to talk about maybe a couple of tweaks to the, um, information sheet that we present publicly. And it was really quite productive, so I appreciate that staff time.
Good. June 9th, Safer Advisory, Director Strata?
Yeah, so, um, actually, I don't know if I need to say this, but I took off on the, on the 8th. So, so maybe that needs to say June 8th, June 9th, June 10th. I came back on June 10th. The meeting was a, uh, all-morning meeting, um, early in the morning. And it was actually our first in-person meeting since about maybe two years ago. And, uh, as you know, this is a group that was, um, directed to be put together as part of SB 200. It was a fund that was created, um, making $130 million available each year for the next 10 years for purposes of, uh, addressing water issues across California. And so, uh, there are 19 appointed members, uh, that work directly with the, the Water Board and Water Board staff to prioritize, um, projects, uh, budgets, uh, et cetera. Um, we discussed the 2022 needs assessment, um, which kind of outlines, um, a number of priorities related to, uh, water quality, financial aspects of systems. Um, they're, they're, they're just metrics to, uh, try to figure out, uh, what systems should be getting priority. Uh, one of the, one of the, the things that I think is, is fairly new and interesting is that because of all the money that, um, is becoming available through the infrastructure money that, that's coming to California, they've actually expanded the, uh, how, uh, the Water Board can, can fund projects related to, systems that are, that are considered larger than small systems. So, so I think, I think systems that, that now are up to, I believe it was, I believe it was like 30,000 or 30,000 connections or serving a population of, um, 100,000 people now could, could qualify to tap into some of this money. So, so, uh, you know, I, I know that we have two systems, uh, here at CBWD. So maybe, um, those can be looked at separately. I don't know. But those, those are some of the new things that we talked about. And, uh, they also, you know, the Safer group is starting to track, to track bills just in the way, same way that we kinda do at the Legislative Committee. So there are a number of bills that, um, that are, that are being tracked. And, um, and so I'm, I'm, I'm happy to kinda share those, um, when we meet at the Legislative Committee.
Okay. Thank you. Director Bianco, did you say, you already said you didn't attend these on the 9th? Yeah, okay. And then this DVBA, there, I don't think there was a DVBA meeting on the 9th, but that's not real. June 10th, Mission?
I did not attend that event, but based on the press, it looked like it was a good event.
Yeah, they got good coverage.
Really did.
On the desert sun. Good. Any other meetings?
Yes, Mr. President, I, I have, um, I have a, one or two more meetings. So, uh, I mentioned that, uh, that I came back on June 10th. Uh, while I was, uh, in Sacramento, I also took the chance to meet with, uh, our lobbyist, Chris Khan. Uh, I did discuss the, um, the bills that we were tracking at Safer. Uh, a lot of those bills are bills that, that are already on the list for us to watch on, on our own committee. So that, that, that was good. I did have a conversation with him about, uh, where the bill related to the, the previous item that we had, the request that was to have a presentation by some of the co-authors, give a, a, a quick update at our legislative meeting. I asked him about that bill and, 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 um, he says that that bill's, um, ready to move. Uh, it was actually a two-year bill and, and, uh, the Governor's Office, um, requested the author, which I think is Senator Dodd, to put the bill on pause because, um, the Governor's Office wanted to weigh in on it, related to where the money was gonna go and who was gonna have oversight of the money. Uh, at one point, I, I think the original, the original language was that the, was that the funding would be controlled by a, I forget. I'm not too familiar with this department, but it's a community district department. And I think the, um, the, the Governor's Office, uh, wants the money to be housed, uh, and controlled and the project controlled, the program through the State Water Board. So, uh, it sounds like that bill's getting ready to be reintroduced and it has a significant amount of support. And it almost feels like it's, it's, um, it's, uh, it's gonna, it's a bill that's gonna go through. So, so it's, it's important for us to try to understand, uh, what that bill does and, and maybe how we might have some input. So I'm happy that we're gonna have that presentation.
Just, just to kinda clarify, that's SB 222.
Yes, SB 222. And, uh, and, and so I, I met with Chris, uh, it was good to see him again in person. It's been a while since I had been up there in person. Uh, and then, uh, I also met with the Assembly Member's Office to talk about, um, uh, several bills, um, and, and, uh, budget opportunities. And then, uh, and then I came back on Friday. And then I left back again on Friday to, uh, Pico Rivera, um, for a conference, well-conference water education for Latino leaders. Uh, and, um, I was there on Saturday, because I was asked to, uh, introduce, uh, the Chair of the State Water Board, Joaquines Kivell. So, um, he's, he's a big supporter of, of that group. And, uh, it's made up of a number of folks, but count, a lot of council members, uh, from across the state, the school board members, supervisors. And I think it's a group that tries to bring some water education, uh, to, uh, elected officials that are not necessarily Water Board Directors. Because, uh, so, so I had, I had the privilege of, of introducing, uh, the Chair of the Water Board. And, um, and that was mostly what I did at, you know, at that meeting, that conference.
Good, thanks.
That was it for me.
Anything else from? Their motion to approve the meetings reported on? I'll make a motion?
Second.
Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passed 4-0. General Manager, thought we'd never get there. Only 11:30.
I'll keep it short, sir. Uh, COVID, currently four qualifying cases, nine people off work. We've had 14 so far this month. The LAFCO, uh, Representative for, uh, Western Riverside County, the election has been completed. Phil Williams, who's basically the incumbent from Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District, was successful. Uh, the only other thing I have is Friday, I was in San Diego attending a meeting with Reclamation and the other lower basin states. Uh, I have also forwarded to you a link, uh, to a Senate hearing, uh, Energy and Natural Resources, uh, occurred this morning. Uh, the Reclamation Commissioner, Commissioner Camille Tooten, uh, spoke, as did John Ensminger, who's the GM from Southern Nevada Water Authority, and Patrick O'Toole, who's the President of the Family Farm Allowance. Uh, the meeting, uh, on Friday basically was to, uh, get us, get, for Reclamation to get a sense of how collaborative the lower basin states were going to be as they looked to, uh, perhaps coming up with a protection volume, uh, for, uh, MEED and Powell, which could result in additional conservations of between 2 and 4 million acre feet. You know, asking, uh, Reclamation whether or not they had any sense of how that would be divided. One of the representatives basically said, well, the, right now, the upper basin is using about 4 million, the lower basin is using about 10 million. So if we get the upper basin to conserve 1 million, the lower basin conserves 2.5 million, we're pretty much in the ballpark. So we have not yet a portion that, uh, amongst the states. Uh, of course, Arizona had a proposal which did not recognize California's senior rights. Uh, and I think, uh, the California, uh, Board, uh, has taken a, a look at perhaps how they might allocate, uh, the number within California, uh, but they haven't shared that with anybody yet. So, that's that. That's all I've got, sir.
Thank you. Council?
Yes, Mr. President, uh, just real briefly, uh, bills dealing with, uh, long-term opportunities to engage in virtual meetings after AV 361 expires are still in process. We'll certainly keep you updated as to when and how those move forward. Certainly with the action taken today, we want to be sure we're ready for that. So that's all I have.
Thank you. And I'm guessing there's no departmental reports? If so, they would have.
Well, there's a number of folks that stuck around to the very end, but no, I don't see anybody getting up. I think Steve Engley's the only, and Steve and Carrie are the only two department heads that didn't get to make a report today.
No. So, uh, at this time, the board will recess into closed session to consider the items on the agenda and we will reconvene, uh, when we complete that and report out. Good. Well, rigor meeting is hereby reconvened. We do not have any reportable actions from the closed section, session. And, uh, with no further business and here even no objection, we are adjourned.